I call to order the Planning Commission's special meeting of Thursday, April 28, 2016. We have a roll call, please.
Yes. Commissioner Fergoso. Commissioner Hamilton. Commissioner Caroline.
Here.
Commissioner Ackerman.
Here.
Commissioner Newton. Commissioner Green. Commissioner Gonzalez Parmer. Thank you.
May I have an approval of the -- a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So it doesn't look at the moment that we have any public -- so I guess we have no public comments on non-agenda items, so we'll -- and I guess this isn't considered a public hearing item?
No, this is considered a discussion item.
Okay, so Jim, do you have a follow-up staff report?
Sure. Actually, I attached the staff report, which is just an updated version that you've seen many times now. And as we discussed at your last meeting, what you're here tonight to go through is the first draft after much discussion and noodling particular issues. Katie Wazinski is here to walk us through the draft, and will be handling the iterative process with you all on this draft. And then she kindly prepared this list of seven sort of outstanding follow-up items that we'd like some further clarification on, and then actually an eighth one at the very end. And we don't intend on this other -- this is what is supplemental, I hand it out to you, to have to actually come up with a language on these, we just want some policy direction. And the game plan, after you all review this draft tonight and make any -- anything from editing changes to policy changes, we will bring it back yet again, and we will add language relative to these points following your discussion. And our intention, the next time we bring it back, hopefully we'll have other members of the Planning Commission, and we will formally notice the next time you see this, assuming we get through this tonight, so that we alert the public that you will be considering the draft ordinance at the next meeting. And likewise, I'd like to, at the end of tonight, depending on how this goes, ask you at the end of tonight whether you want to include this on the next open agenda, and May is very, very full at this point, we have six items. So we would either hope you would do another special meeting like tonight, perhaps the Thursday after the next meeting in May, or we would bring it back perhaps in June, which is a ways out. So I just would like to get a handle after tonight, a comfort level with you, whether you want to bring it back to a formal meeting or have a special meeting that we notice. And we have to notice, you know, a large area. It's a big deal, the mail-out for this is a big deal, which Michelle can attest to. You know, a lot of labeling, folding, and it's no small thing to notice this. So we will do that the next time. And lastly, the reason for tonight's being just a working session on this is we don't want to pressure you at all to come to the finish line, want all the time necessary to really thoroughly give this the review it deserves. So with that, if you have any questions, please.
Do we need to do two readings before -- do we have to do two readings before we pass it up to the town council?
No.
But they'll have to do two readings once they get it.
That's right, right. To actually pass the ordinance, you have a first reading, the second reading, and then it goes into effect 30 days after the second reading. And the one stipulation on those two readings at the town council level, for those that might be watching tonight or on a tape, is that the second meeting has to be at a normally-scheduled town council hearing, it can't be at a special meeting. But that's -- you will pass, the next time you see this, you will have a resolution attached to it, passing it up to the council for their consideration.
Through the chair, but that could be a special meeting?
Yes.
Not a regular meeting?
Right. Yeah, and again, the agenda for May at this point, it may change, we may have one or two drop out, so I'm waiting to see, and I'll give you some feedback between now and the next meeting. Actually, in the near future, we'll know very soon whether we have the full docket of six coming.
And what is the schedule for the Town Center Element workshops?
Ah, thank you.
So just trying to think how this -- because there isn't congruity to it, so what is that schedule?
So we're a little bit -- that might be under commissioners' comments and requests, but since it's so informal, we actually are trying to nail down the town council on the first workshop date. And the Saturday dates in June have failed, so I just sent out a doodle poll this afternoon for some nights during the week in June, and a little bit tighter schedule at that workshop, which is just to look at existing policies and plans, and also urban design analysis. So to be from 6:30 to 9:30 sometime. And I should -- I'm hoping to get a handle on that and be able to let the public, you all and the public, know next week what the date of the first workshop is. But I struck out with the Saturdays, so it's going to be during the week, which hopefully will be a little easier.
And we'll discuss this further at the director's report?
Actually, I just noticed that's not on here, but your comments and questions are on here, so you can -- we can talk about it then. Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah. So I guess, do you want to go over your memo first, or do?
No. I'd go through the draft first, and then circle back.
The draft is the --
Yeah, the actual draft.
Okay, and so do you want to -- so I guess I would ask if any of the commissioners noticed any items that they would like to bring to our attention.
And maybe the way to go here, and again, I'm just going to turn it over to Katie, and where I am needed to chime in, I will, but I would just sort of recommend going through page by page. And forgive me, I meant to again introduce Katie Wazinski, who's our Assistant Town Attorney, who's crafted this and was here last time, as you know, and Michelle Levinson, who's our active hand on the ordinance. So we'll be doing real-time edits, and you do have a quorum tonight, so this is real business. And we hope that your colleagues will agree to the changes you've made, so we don't have to go backwards next time. So I would just go through page by page and then go into these ancillary questions.
Okay. Shelley, you have something?
Sure. My only question was before going page by page, like if there were kind of -- I didn't write up my own memo, but there was a couple, as I got through two-quarters of it, I realized that there was some kind of either formatting things or thematic thing that hit a couple of different places, and I was wondering if anyone else had it similar to -- that are kind of overarching questions that might resolve the individual, if that makes any sense.
So do you think that would be better to go through now, or after we've gone through the body of the text?
I would think beforehand, because it'll come up in the body, but I would defer to your opinion.
It's fine with me.
Are we referring -- excuse me, are we referring to this list, reviewing this first?
No. The ordinance.
Okay.
So I think, if you don't mind, what might make some sense is if we all just flipped to, excuse me, page 12 of the draft ordinance, and we can just give a brief overview of how it all hangs together, and then we can entertain these larger thematic questions you have, and then maybe dive into some of the details that either people have noted on their own or that we have listed here. Does that work for all of you?
Sure, sure.
Okay.
I think that would be helpful, not only for us, but for people who are watching, to also get a sense of kind of the structure of this as we go through it, so it's kind of like a table of contents, so they know where we are when going through that, I think that would be very helpful. Thank you.
All right. So if everyone's in agreement, then we can kind of proceed that way. And I see we've got it pulled up on the screen here. So what I'll say initially is that this looks very different than the individually enumerated uses that we had laid out for the principally permitted uses, and then the conditionally permitted uses. And the point of this table is twofold. It's to replace both of those sections and pull together in one spot that's easy to read these new use classifications, and how they'll be treated as principally permitted uses, conditionally permitted uses, or prohibited, and additionally call attention to any limitations or additional use regulations that may apply to some or all of these use classifications. So in looking at page 12, which is the start of our table, you'll see up at the top beneath use, we have commercial uses called out in bold, and then everything listed beneath that is the set of use classifications that we developed together the last time around. Until we get to page 13, when we've got more bold language that says industrial uses, where we have that light industrial use classification we talked about, beneath that we have public and quasi-public uses, which is just the park facilities and the post office at this point. And then beneath that, finally, are the residential uses. So within each of those larger categories, we have those use classifications that we talked about. The next column over, after the uses, is the status, and that indicates whether that given use classification is permitted, permitted with a use permit, or not permitted, and that's fairly self-explanatory. The column after that entitled limitation.
If I could interrupt, and so not permitted would be intended to mean that the Planning Commission could not override that?
That's correct. If an applicant wanted to gain approval for a use that is indicated as not permitted, they would have to seek a zoning amendment.
And is this list comprehensive of the definitions in the earlier chapter, or are there definitions that are not represented in this list?
That's a very good question. So no, it is not comprehensive, because it is envisioned that once we expand the idea of using use classifications across all of our zoning districts eventually, there'll be a whole bunch of them that don't apply within a particular zone. So we haven't listed each and every one. What we have done is list individual use classifications that one might think, well, perhaps this could be permitted here, and we've listed it and said not permitted, so there's no question at all.
But by definition, if it's not listed, it's assumed or stated somewhere that it's not allowed?
That's correct. And if you go back to page 11, at the very bottom, the last paragraph says, "The uses listed are based on the use classifications set forth in Town Code Section blah, blah, blah. Use classifications not listed are prohibited unless authorized by the Director of Planning and Building Services," and we can talk about that in terms of if it's a similar use that's not actually prohibited but didn't cleanly fall into one category. So. So the limitation column is meant to give a sense of, is this allowed on the ground floor? Is it allowed only on the second story? Is it allowed in the rear? That's what that column kind of speaks to. The additional use regulations column speaks to things that are a little more nitpicky, such as whether that use classification has to be conducted wholly indoors, or whether, like a park, we would allow it to be conducted outdoors, obviously, and then some residential details, like unit sizes. So that's how the table works. And if you look at -- Michelle, could I ask you to scroll up to page 12, so we can see the bold commercial uses at the top of the table? Oh, you have different pagination. If you keep scrolling to the beginning of the table. Almost there. There we go. So commercial uses, if you go over to the right, you see limitation L1, and that limitation L1 says that commercial uses with a gross floor area of 10,000 square feet or less are permitted, and anything higher than that, anything greater than that, would need to come back and get a use permit, even if it's otherwise a permitted use. So restaurants, retail shops, anything that we've identified as a permitted use in here, you can do by right, as long as you're 10,000 square feet or less. But if you're greater than that, you're going to have to come in for a use permit. And that's to sort of keep the small, varied nature of this retail center feasible. So does that make sense?
To all the commercial uses, because it's only that whole line.
Couldn't staff or legal counsel give me a sense of a building that is 10,000 square feet, so I can visualize that? Would that be?
The Good Earth?
The Good Earth, that's good. That's right about 10,000.
No, no, it's actually over, it's much over, it's like 20,000, I think.
Ooh, 20.
Yeah, and the old Good Earth, I think, is 8,000. Or maybe between 6 and 8.
The Bike Museum?
Yeah, with the whole building, including the food processing thing in the back.
It's about 8,000.
I think six, it might be six, actually, but yeah. We don't have, I don't believe we have many buildings over, if any. Fair and Selm, the buildings at Fair and Selm might be in bulk, but they don't have all the, you know, they don't have upstairs filled all the way.
What about Fairfax Market? Do you have any idea?
Fairfax Market, that's a good question. That is probably very close to it.
That could be close to 10,000.
That's about it. That's a good example of what would be that type of building, yeah.
Thank you.
And was there a reason why you applied L1 simply to commercial uses as opposed to all uses, which would then fold in industrial, public and quasi and residential?
That's a good question. If you look at industrial uses, you'll see that it does include L1. And then residential uses, we didn't include that, because that's going to be determined more by units, number of units, and how they can be configured on a particular property, not a given square footage. Does that make sense? We're looking more at the unit numbers. And for public and quasi-public uses, that didn't seem to be a relevant metric, because we're talking parks and post offices there, so that was the thinking.
Through the chair, I think also, when you're talking about a 10,000-square-foot building, you have to park it, and that would be pretty tough to do in the downtown.
So at our meeting last time, we took all those individually enumerated uses and talked about how we could fit them into new use classifications. And so these use classifications are our attempt to reflect the direction that you all provided last time. And each of these use classifications has a definition applied to it in the pages preceding this table. And we're looking for some further direction on some of these definitions tonight, but if there are any particular questions about any given definition, I'm happy to entertain those too, or have Jim answer, as might be appropriate.
Thanks for that overview, that's helpful. The -- there are in several places in the table, and I don't think anywhere else in the text, some things that look sort of like footnotes, like small numbers in brackets. What are they?
So those were -- the document is in red line, so you could see what had been changed. Those parentheticals indicate where comment bubbles were, and the comment bubbles were just my notes to Jim and Linda, and so I had asked them not to be printed, because they were just a dialogue back and forth between us.
Okay.
They will disappear.
Thank you.
Thank you, through the chair. Should we discuss this personal services category now, or should we wait till we get to the health section in the chart, Katie?
Well, I am happy to take your direction. If you like, we can just start marching down the chart and kind of go use by -- go ahead, Shelley, I'm sorry.
I just had a couple higher-altitude questions.
Yes.
One of them, from a format perspective, some of the definitions said see also lumber and building, said see also, or had embedded within it references to other, or use of the name of another category. And I was wondering, are the definitions meant to be exclusive of each other, which would be my suggestion? Or, so as we go through these, I can call out where I saw, wait a minute, that's using a word that's over here on the next page, and it's a little confusing, because is it including that?
That's a very good question. The parentheticals, for example, if you look at automobile washing, just as an example, the parenthetical following it says, "For automobile washing on the same site as a service station, see vehicle equipment sales and services, comma, service stations." And those parentheticals are meant to indicate, if what you're actually looking for is this, go look over there, because this isn't it. So they are meant to be exclusive of one another, and I think that you raise a very good point, and we could add prefatory language to indicate that to the reader.
I think that'd be helpful, because I was reading it as possibly inclusive of it, so that if we were permitting, using your example, automobile washing, I was confused, like, well, are we by default also permitting the see also groups, or not? So that would be helpful clarification on that.
Thank you very much.
And then, there was a couple other small places where there was, it really, there was a term that was used in another, but I'll come to it when we get there. My other large thing was, I do remember in our last conversation, we had a discussion about liquor sales and tobacco, and alcohol and tobacco, and the idea of where they're permitted, do we have a certain percentage or volume allowed? And I didn't see that indicated anywhere in here. And there were a couple places where I noticed it was kind of lumped in with something else as opposed to called out separately, and I just wanted to hear if you had, your kind of overarching thoughts on liquor and tobacco sales.
Good follow-ups. So both alcohol and tobacco sales are highly, highly regulated by the state, and we have a very limited purview as to the manner in which we can regulate sales. So what people wind up doing, there are two approaches. One, towns and cities frequently regulate those things under their business licenses and specialty business regulations, so that wouldn't be part of the zoning ordinance, that would be a separate effort. The other thing that towns and cities do is separate out uses where alcohol sales come into play, such as restaurants, bars, types of eating and drinking establishments, and food and beverage sales, and treat those differently based on their potential disparate impacts. And so that does happen in your zoning ordinance, and the way we've tried to accommodate that here is that in the eating and drinking establishments, you'll notice that there are various permutations of those, and one of them is with full alcoholic beverage service, which we've got tentatively listed as requiring a use permit, so we could evaluate the impacts. The next one is eating and drinking establishment with wine and beer service, which is more of our restaurant type, which we have tentatively listed here as just a permitted use, you don't need a use permit for it. So that's an attempt to recognize that these two different alcohol models might have different impacts on the community.
Did you consider doing a similar thing with the food and beverage sales? That's another place where it says liquor stores?
Yes.
And you could have food and beverage sales with liquor stores and without liquor stores?
I believe we could do that, and you'll notice that the third bullet on the handout that Jim gave us all is actually, should we divide up the food and beverage sales category into something more refined? And so that's something that we can do, and then I can look into whether there are any particular limitations that we need to take note of, so.
And as we go through here, I think there was one other, those might be the only two -- those are the only two places where liquor sales, and I didn't see any place where it mentioned tobacco, and I wasn't sure if that was in the same.
Tobacco is not included in here, and generally, the way in which tobacco is regulated is through, like I said, the business regulations that have, that have things like permitted retailers and the licensing application that you have to go through to be one of those retailers, and the distances, if any, for example, that you would require between retailers. So it's not something I would usually put in a zoning ordinance, but I can certainly mark down the comment.
And are firearms also regulated similarly? I know we don't really have that issue right now in Fairfax, but I didn't see it noted, and one could consider it retail, and I wasn't sure how that.
You know, firearms, that's another heavily regulated area, and I have seen that included in zoning ordinances, and if that's something that the commission wishes to discuss or separate from the rest of the retail sales category, that's something I'm happy to look into further to make sure we don't get too far out in front of ourselves.
I'll stop monopolizing, in case someone else has any of these bigger.
So could I get a sense from the rest of the commission, is there interest in exploring, breaking down the food and beverage sales use classification into some more refined categories, such as is suggested on the third bullet of the handout?
I think it could be helpful, because I think it is a large, I don't know what the word, how to describe it, but it is something that is a very popular use in our town, and I think that it would benefit to have some more definition or refinement to better describe it.
I think, I sort of agree, and what I see missing is, for instance, if we had a new convenience store come in, according to this, they could not sell tobacco. They could sell alcohol, but not tobacco, because it's not allowed. Would that then be something that the zoning director could approve, or would that have to come for a use permit?
Excuse me, I'm missing, where is it not allowed, the tobacco?
It's just not included in the list, but I think it would, I think the, or I think that'd be helpful clarification. If it's not included in the list, it doesn't mean that it's not allowed, or does it mean that you have to get a, what do you do if it's not in the list?
Well, candy isn't included in the list, and yet that's probably something that would be --
Should be allowed.
Well, whether it should or shouldn't.
I vote for candy, absolutely.
So I don't know whether liquor not being listed would imply that it's not.
Well, no, liquor, tobacco, yep, right, you missed.
Yeah.
So the way in which this is framed, it is not meant to imply that any particular product could not be sold, because it is not included in our illustrative list. And we can add language to that effect, to make it clear that you can sell candy and tobacco, or whatever else. But that is part of the, you know, shift in perspective that comes with moving away from these individually, I mean, we used to allow candy shops, and now we've lost that very clear line, and we just have retail sales, and that covers a whole lot.
I would advocate for adding, maybe in the section 12, in that paragraph that you had called out, "The uses listed are based on the use classifications, yada, yada," something that just says the items listed, or the uses listed within each classification are illustrative of type, but are not, but do not constitute an exhaustive list.
Not all.
That they're illustrative, not exhaustive.
Not all-inclusive.
Yeah. That, and I have other, and I have other, I think, I have other question about that particular paragraph, but it seems like that would be a good paragraph to put language in there.
Would you entertain the idea of me adding that to the definitions themselves?
So, I'll include but are not limited to, I don't think you'd want to have to put that in every single one. Like, maybe it does go in the opening paragraph, use classifications? Or maybe it goes in the opening paragraph, the 17.00, 8.030? Yeah, I think if you put, you could put it in there, that they are inclusive of but not limited to in that opening paragraph, and then it would indicate all of the below.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And you probably did notice, too, as you went through the definitions, that some of them were either blank entirely, or still had ellipses at the end, because we were going to add to them, and those are ones where we have particular questions for you tonight, or have statutory definitions that will just drive the definition, so.
You kind of have it in there. I mean, "Director shall determine whether specific use shall be deemed to be of the same general nature as one of the classifications." It's kind of, but maybe call it out more.
I think you're right, I think it would be better if it was called out more explicitly. Thank you.
Could I ask a general question about the limitations? On page 14, the L2 category, and I was looking specifically at offices and medical uses, I thought we had agreed that we wanted retail on our first floor in the main core of the downtown. And yet, the L2 allows for And yet, the L2 allows for non-retail offices on the first floor with a use permit, even though it is the frontage of the street, as well, that the, is compatible, will not deter pre-. Was that what we agreed upon? So is this contradictory then to what we?
No, it's, it's not allowed by right, you have to get a use permit to have the offices on the ground floor.
But, to have to get a use permit, it kind of assumes that you can do it.
No, not necessarily, and we're gonna have one coming in on this very point.
That's what I'm thinking, that I want this to be clear, because according to this, they can apply for a use permit, but of course.
Right.
We don't have to. But what would our basis be if this says, in order to grant the permit, the planning commission makes findings that the use is compat, well.
Right.
Why don't we just, if, if it's not going to be compatible and would deter pedestrian traffic, why would we consider it?
Well, because each space, sorry, each space is unique, and in certain circumstances, there may be compelling reasons from the landlord why it may make sense. And, and conversely, it might make sense, it allows us the latitude to grant the use permit if we think it's palatable. I don't think it implies that it's a slam dunk for them, and maybe you can help me on that.
By saying that a use permit may be sought, that doesn't guarantee that one will be issued. However, we do need to make sure that we are using use permit criteria that we can and will apply evenly to all similarly situated applicants. And so if the suggested criteria that we have under L2 are not the right ones, and there are more or different criteria that we think would be germane to a decision, we should discuss that and, and consider whether or not to add those.
I would not necessarily have a problem with the existing language, but I might like to see something additional in here about the retail nature and need for economic develop, viability of the town, which is one of the reasons for not allowing.
And, and one of the good things about the general plan is we, you know, in our staff reports often, and in our resolutions, and our recommendations, we hearken back to the general plan. And I think that does give us strong lead in what you're talking about.
Okay, makes sense.
What, could you just quickly, section, it says must make findings required by section seventeen point oh three two point oh six oh? Just quickly, I didn't look back on what that was.
Those are just your general conditional use permit findings that we require for any CUP. So we wanted to make clear that you have to qualify for a CUP, but above and beyond that, there are further findings the planning commission has to be able to make too. You don't escape the whole CUP process and just have to meet these additional two findings.
And Jim, what about adding that general plan language into L2? In addition, as a finding, say, because above, you say, you mentioned the town center element of the general plan, keeping with the architectural nature. I mean, could, what about just explicitly adding in the L2 provision and must fit within the guidelines articulated in the general plan? Or some appropriate indicator towards the general plan?
So, I defer to Katie on that one.
We can, we can certainly make a formal nod to general plan compliance. I would say that each and every land use approval that we issue has to comply with the general plan, but there's no harm in calling attention to particular portions of it to let applicants know what will be expected of them as they seek approval.
And then, I'm sorry, you go ahead.
I'm just noting here that there are a few places where L2, in the table, where L2 is listed as a limitation without L1 being listed, so it may make sense to, to refer to the general plan in L2, to carry them into there.
And I would just note that, so L1 is listed right across from the commercial uses as, as an indication that it applies to every commercial use, so.
Right, right. Okay. Would it, would it make sense to just put a parenthetical on, right there in the table after L1, that says this applies to all commercial uses below? Just so that, because I missed that entirely when I was reviewing this document.
I also read that as, these are, it would be the Ls or the As or Bs, kind of a more generic than a specific requirement.
I see, yes, I can add a parenthetical that indicates that this applies to everything that follows within the commercial uses.
And Michelle was actually trying to insert little tags along the way to give us a heads up that that's, we're gonna go back and do something, so. Katie will forward you a copy of this and get it done too.
Might it not help to just stick L1? I mean, it seems repetitive, and I'm usually not one for being repetitive, but stick L1 in all of them, all the way down, just in case, for example, you're looking on page thirteen and page, instead of page twelve? And if I'm reading page thirteen and I'm not seeing the header up there, I might not catch that it's applied here. Just a thought.
Bruce, would that address your?
It would. It would make it clearer, yeah. I, and I don't mind having that repetition, it's.
If the rest of the commission feels the same, I'm happy to do that, that's easy.
I think it's a good idea.
So that, that addresses, I think, the discussion we were having before about referring to compatibility with the general plan and with the architectural nature of the town. That would be really clearly on all.
That would be perfectly clear.
And it would address the fact that I've now missed it not once, but twice.
And that is the same with A and B then?
Precisely, yes. And I will also do the same for the industrial uses. You see, it's got L1, L2, and L3 listed as well, as a B. So I'll carry all of those through.
And, and Michelle, I don't know if you have to do that right now, you might, just say repeat. You can just tag the first one, say repeat.
My only other formatting thing, in terms of ease of use, and when I went through this, was I felt like that the commercial uses, it was very helpful in the commercial uses to have those subcategories called out. And there was a number of times in which I was, the residential uses got all confusing to me. Like, I'd get to a residential use three pages later and go, well, isn't that the same as the one I just read earlier? And then I think it was the same, and then I'd go back to the one earlier, and, oh no, this is only during the daytime, and this is twenty-four hours. And it was really hard to do a comparative look at the residential uses. So possibly, clumping the residential uses altogether in the definitions might be helpful for people to sort them.
I think that's an excellent suggestion, and if the rest of the commission is in agreement that back in the definitions, we'll start out with like, commercial uses list, industrial uses, uses list, and so on and so forth, then I can make that change.
I agree.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, that works for.
And then along, and long industrial uses, really, there's just the light industrial, right?
Well, there is for purposes of the CC zoning district, but at some point, if we're going to use the same model for all of our zoning districts, then I imagine we may have others, not many others, but one or two.
I, I did, if I can expand on that, because I, that was one of the items that troubled me when I was, and then I read what you put down for what industrial uses were in the definitions here, and I don't know, when I think of light industrial, I'm thinking of like, a warehouse, or a wholesale use, so maybe, I think that, maybe we need to have another, maybe subcategory of light industrial. I think I agree with what's listed, but they're kind, I don't know, I think there might be a different term, maybe, I'm not sure what it is at the moment, but that describe all of those type of repair. And I think that we thought like cabinet shops and other kind of things kind of fit in that as well.
I had a similar, I was like, and it also confused me because we have a CL zone, which is a commercial, a light commercial zone, and I felt it might get a little confusing, oh, is this applying to that zone, not this zone? And if we are gonna add it later? I agreed, I was like, I was, came up with words like home care and something or another, trying to come up with a word that wasn't industrial, but meant, you know, small appliance repair, diaper service, furniture repair, the fix-it shop guy, the knife sharpener guy, which seems to have disappeared from everything, small appliances that you could carry, and to distinguish it from what I, I agree with you, I think people think of with industrial, would be like washing machines and equipment.
I think that's an excellent point, and it's one that Janet and I had discussed ourselves. I stuck with the light industrial for this first go-round, because that's what we used in our last discussion. And we just kept kind of putting everything else into that category. I don't remember what the first item was, but somehow that got to be our tag name. And I actually think this is one that we might be able to divide up into two subcategories, one more along the lines of appliance repair and services, and then another one that perhaps deals with not necessarily hazardous chemicals, but substances to which we didn't necessarily want all of our pedestrian and, you know, retail visitors exposed to regularly. And we had talked about that in terms of like, dry cleaning and diaper services and those types of things. So trying to think of the commonalities that bring these uses together, if you guys don't mind if I take another crack at that, then I could go ahead and do that.
That, that sounds useful. They, just, just to give you my take on what the term light industrial means, exclusive of what's written here, I think of it as being sort of like, light, light manufacturing, almost. I mean, that's just what comes to my mind. Like someone who sits down and sews the buckles on the ends of straps for, for some kind of, you know, that's, that would be light industrial, as opposed to a stamping machine, that would be heavy industrial. So I, I think the light industrial term maybe should be either defined very clearly or just find a different term so that we aren't carrying ideas that we don't intend to.
I was also, there was some alliance with some of the personnel, personal services, you know, the seamstress, tailor's shoe repair shops, while those are personal in, in nature, it was almost like home care services as a parallel to personal services. That would be things like furniture and upholstery repair, and knife sharpeners, and small appliances, and things like that. But it seemed like there was some slight overlap in the type of equipment that would be used to fix things, that like seamstressresses and tailors and stuff use, use kind of light equipment, not heavier equipment. But that's what came up to my mind, was a home care services or home services, or something like that? Home equipment services?
Okay, I'll, I'll take those and noodle on them, thank you very much.
And I had another comment regarding that, that particular category, because I noticed in the table, it was listed as permitted, and I could see maybe some of those uses that Shelley just mentioned, but I also kind of think of it more as something, a lot of those uses maybe should require a use permit, because they have maybe noise issues, or delivery issues, and things like that. And then I didn't also, I didn't, I don't know if they, well, I see up above, it was the same thing as we had before, we had the general limitations listed at the top of the category, as far as where are the best, where those are allowed in the part of the building, so. That was my comment on that.
So those are helpful comments, I will carry down the L1, L2, L3, and the B, so we've got that there. But in terms of whether or not to have these be permitted uses, or have them require a use permit, does the commission have particular direction there? Right now, we've got them permitted in the rear, or on the second floor, unless you come in and ask for and receive a use permit to operate in the store frontage. So that's how they're set up right now. Do you have a different preference? Do you want all of these to require a use permit, even for the second story or rear locations?
Well, I think that answers my question, Ben. I think if we expand the category, that that would be helpful for some of these more, these.
Change the category.
Well, expand, yeah, have additional subcategories, such as something that's more like a warehouse or a wholesale kind of uses separate from those other types of more kind of repair type of, small repair type of uses.
Okay, and now, having looked at these uses again, are you, are you dedicated to keeping each and every one of these as a potential use in this district, which is our retail zone? Do you still feel like these have a natural home here? Because, you know, part of the, getting rid of the highway commercial use was letting some of those, those uses perhaps drop off or, or not be carried over to the CC. So I just want to make sure I'm getting your direction in that regard.
Is there a way of using an adjective to differentiate, like, to make it seem like it's small furniture? Like, we're not talking big, huge, bulky things that you need massive equipment, but like, if I need a chair recaned, well, that's a piece of furniture, and it's a repair, so it would be furniture repair. But to do recaneing of a, you know, a chair is a different type of activity than building cabinets, you know? And so if there's a way of distinguishing between that kind of fix-it shop kind of activity versus a big construction type of activity, I think that would, for, for me personally, I could see having light fix-it shop activity kind of stuff happen in the back in downtown, but I wouldn't, I couldn't see a big, huge, construction shop kind of activity downtown.
Oh, I think I have kind of the same issue, because in light industrial, if I, if I heard you correctly, all of these require the L1 and A and B. And under light industrial, we have only B listed, but A says, any use permitted by right on the first floor along the frontage is also permitted on the second floor, which means that this would be permitted on the first floor. And then B says that they have to be conducted indoors. So, is that?
I don't want to interrupt, but that's actually not quite, if you look at industrial uses, there's not an A.
Just a B.
Just a B.
Oh, I see, so that's different from the commercial uses. So, when you said L1 and AB apply to all, I assumed they apply to all pages, but you only meant to the commercial uses?
That's correct, and so I do think it's an excellent suggestion to just carry those through for each and every line item, and there's no confusion that way.
I have gotten confused several times with that. Also, I have one, are there dry cleaners? I saw dry cleaners somewhere, and now I can't find them.
It's actually included in personal services.
Oh, personal services.
We had talked about that as perhaps being within the light industrial classification because of the chemicals used.
Exactly, I was just thinking, they're, they're incredibly toxic. The newer ones might be better, but they're all, I've never known one that wasn't a problem with the soils and water.
So if that's something the commission would like to redirect to a difference?
Yeah, I would, I would see, dry cleaning, we had the conversation on diaper services, I guess the end assumption being that they're washing them, the diaper services is including washing. And then the janitorial, and janitorial service and supplies being one category. And then there's this other category of light home ec repair fix-it things. That would be small appliances, small furniture, I don't know what the adjective is here, but these kind of light repair for furniture and upholstery and appliances that are these kinds of light fix-it, not, and that would be a separate category, in my mind. And maybe that other category of the fix-it kind of things wouldn't necessarily be considered an industrial. I don't know, for some reason, I'm just thinking of your knife sharpeners and recaning of a one-off piece of furniture. I, I think of industrial as something that you you, um, you know, I don't know. I think of industry as opposed to a craftsman kind of, a crafts person or a one-off kind of a deal, to me is different from like, you're doing a bunch of them.
It seems to me that in terms of what we're thinking about the impact on the town, the distinctions between the smaller things you're describing and the larger things that you're, that you're thinking about are maybe in terms of size and scale. Um, I mentioned earlier, something like someone, um, sewing buckles onto webbing, that can be done with a sewing machine, it's pretty quiet, um, doesn't require, so, whereas a big stamping machine would be noisy, it would, uh, that noise could actually transmit through the ground, it could be really noisy. It could, um, often use, uh, special electrical service, like need 440 volt or higher electrical service for that kind of thing. So what I think of anyway, in my experience of heavy industrial, has some of those characteristics. So in terms of scale, you've got, you've got noise, you've got just the size of the building that's required, you've got the need to have big trucks backing up and, and doing deliveries, um, probably a big building in the first place. Those are just kind of the characteristics that I think of as what we're trying to separate from these smaller things. It's not, to me, so much a matter of whether you're manufacturing something, like a cabinet shop that makes really nice little small custom cabinets. Doesn't bother me at all that something is being manufactured from raw materials in this town. That doesn't seem like that's, that there's any different impact on the town from repairing something. It's the scale of it that seems to be the issue.
I think that's a very good point, especially because as we go through this, what we really need you to be thinking about is what are the rational distinctions between and amongst these various uses that would call for them to be regulated in different ways? So it is just those sorts of considerations that will really bear on your decision-making. And if we reintroduced this sort of, you know, cabinetry and small appliance repair back into the commercial discussion and took it out of the light industrial where it doesn't really fit, then it would also fall within that 10,000 square foot general limitation, which would by definition keep it on a smaller scale. Okay?
That's great, and I think also adding a preference. So for example, the personal services has a descriptive sentence that starts it, that says provision of recurrently needed services of a personal nature. Some sort of introductory sentence like that for this group, I think would be great. If there's just an introductory, you know, provision of home re- small home repair, you know, whatever you come up with, but some sort of introductory based on our conversation up here, I think that would, that'd be great. I agree with that direction.
That's perfect, thank you, yes.
And another, uh, comment that I wanted, one of my concerns with the light industrial category is because, um, where that would normally be located at so-called light industrial, we have very, we only have a few parcels in town that, but there, but there might be, there, there could be, um-
Lydia's Kitchen. Lydia's Kitchen, or, or Wildwoods.
Yes.
Wildwoods.
Right, right, so-
The tofu, which was not one tofu pan at a time, it was large-scale production.
So, I, I could see that there could be, there could be, uh, a business that could thrive in this type of zone, so, but I think it could be more something that would, would require something like a use permit or something.
Well, and that would be a different, or that might be a different zone. I mean, if it's, differentiate, we have a CL zone still.
It could go into CL.
Or we might at some future date in some other future, somebody might want to carve out some more CL parcels, who knows? But I think separating, I agree, I think separating light industrial happens in its own zone, and central commercial is a different thing, and not getting it confused by using the industrial word in the central commercial would be helpful.
And one last comment on this from me is publishing under personal services, I think should be put under light industrial.
Publishing?
Or commercial or CL.
That's, that's a very good call.
Because that's not a personal service. That, to me, is, is light industrial or CL.
Uh, I was reading it as, um, desktop publishing, not a big, uh-
You mean, you mean printing?
It's not, you mean, you mean like a printer, a printer. Cause I was, when I said publisher, I was thinking technology, desktop, office type of thing, not, so, so printing I could see being in the light industrial, but a publisher is somebody who reviews manuscripts and might do layout, desktop layout stuff, and that would be different, right?
I, I thought of it as someone producing 10,000 books.
I, I think that's called printing, 'cause I, I used to be in that field. I would, I would call that printing. Printing and binding, you know, printing would be putting the-
Is that not light industrial?
No, but I mean, just as opposed to publishing, that would be, the word would be printing to mean that, whereas publishing-
But is the function light industrial of printing out a bunch of books?
I, I like the idea of not using the term light industrial, as we, as we've been discussing.
But, but I, I agree with, I agree with you that I don't think a large, um, newspaper printing setup in downtown Fairfax makes sense. That does seem like it's more of a large manufacturing kind of thing, but I agree that it would be called printing, not necessarily publishing.
But, but again, it's a matter of scale. I mean, you can, there can be printing presses that are the size of a photocopy machine and, and that don't make a lot of noise and, you know, so all printing isn't the same. But, a big, a big huge press, though, they can be, they can be kind of outrageous.
Katie, did you get all that?
I, I, I think I've got enough to be going on with. Um, and what I did want to mention before I forget it entirely, is that there are a couple of other small sections, like section one of the ordinance, um, that just do a couple of cleanups to remove cross-references to the highway commercial. So if there are questions about that, I'm, I'm happy to take them, or Jim's happy to take them, but I, I at least wanted to acknowledge that those things were there. Um, some of those things are not in the zoning ordinance, so technically they didn't have to be part of this ordinance to come before you and then go to council, but it just made sense to do them all in one place, so that's why you're seeing them.
Right, that section one, at first I thought, oh, I got, I got the wrong staff report, and then I realized, no, that makes sense.
So I don't have any other overarching things, I'm happy to go page by page now.
Anyone else have any other questions?
This is for the low-altitude comments.
Yes. Okay, well, while we were talking, this might be, one of my other items actually dovetails into section one, where you do mention, um, medical marijuana dispensary. I don't think, is that listed anywhere as far as any, in any of these overall definitions? No. It's kind of the same as, got the-
We deal with dispensaries in a separate title of the town code, and not as a land use matter currently. So-
Okay.
They're dealt with in that other section, so we're just not touching them here, and it's just to clean up the cross-reference here.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Okay, so I guess we'll go through, and so where, where's the best place to start?
We're going through the list.
So, it, I, I mean, if you wanted to go through each and every definition, we could. I don't know if that's the best use of your time, and instead, if I could perhaps suggest that we, um, actually start with section 11. So before the use table, section 11 amends the purpose section of the central commercial zone.
Well, at, at some point this evening, I do, in the definitions, I'm not proposing to read every one of them and talk about them, but I have a few comments.
Oh, absolutely, and I, and I, and I do hope we'll move right into the table, but I just wanted to make sure people were comfortable with how we're describing the purpose of this zone, because that's really going to drive a lot of your decisions, and if, if we don't have a good handle on that, I want to make sure we're refining it to a point where we're all comfortable.
Page 10, under section eight, is where you're referring to, the purpose.
Section 11?
Section 11, actually.
On page 11.
That section eight is just a cleanup to get rid of the highway commercial zone.
Are we skipping, skipping, if I had questions on section six, seven, eight, those kinds of things, are we just skipping that and skipping right to 11, or shall we?
No, please go ahead and ask questions.
Okay. Well, and, and did you have questions on the table or on the definitions?
I, I have to say, I've, I've specialized in low-altitude comments, so I have all sorts of little, little corrections and things, and I think we shouldn't, I, it's, I think we should maybe move from the, the high altitude to the low altitude. Maybe later on, we can just go through and say, is there anything minor that we've missed, and then I'll throw all my stuff in. But this is a good discussion, I don't want to break it up.
What about you, Norma? Where, do you have, um, specific comments before page 11?
Um, I don't believe so.
Okay. All right, so, um, so, I, I don't know, Katie, what do you think? I mean, it's, this, this a good place to do it so that we don't, um, go back or forget to go back?
No, I think it, this would be just fine. If you want to just march through the sections, and maybe for now, we can sort of gloss over the use definitions, and as we go through the table and discuss each line item in the table, we can talk about that particular definition if people have issues. Does that make sense to folks?
Yes.
Okay, so if we just start on section one, we can probably dispense with things pretty quickly. That section one, like I said, is just a cleanup to remove the reference to the highway commercial, which will no longer exist. Section two is the use definitions, which we'll come back to. And I would just like to note that these new use classifications will be in addition to the existing definitions in the code. So the existing definitions aren't going to disappear, these will be supplemental. And then section three, I don't know if anyone has any issues. I'll let you guys take it from here.
So, Shelley, I think you said you had, um, did, um, you had some comments before-
I had a clarification on, a clarification question on section four. Um, is this, this section, there had been a prior conversation that said, should there be a discrepancy between tables and map? The map prevails. Is that this section? Because it sounded like that's what this section was. In case of a discretion, discrepancy, what prevails? And I wasn't-
I, I did have that same question, actually.
So, this section, the cleanup that was done was just meant to allude to the fact that the numbering has changed, but yes, this is the section that deals with how to resolve discrepancies between the zoning map and the list of parcels that are within each zone.
And it's meant to say that if there's a discrepancy, the list of parcel prevails over the map? Because, and Jim, you can refresh me, I thought, I remember that we had said that the map prevails over the tables, but this appears to me to say that the table prevails over the map.
Yes.
So you are correct in your memory, but then that ordinance was ultimately repealed, right? So that, that language isn't in the code anymore. So, right now, where we're at is that we're still being guided by the list. We haven't changed the whole zoning map. Um, wha- what you're talking about is when, when we had gone through and done that initial go-round, and since we're sort of starting over again, we're starting over again.
But I think, weren't we gonna, when we started over again, weren't, wasn't that a concept that we were going to go re-
I, I have to confess, I'm a little confused. We no longer have the APA, APN table in this section of the ordinance, right? So, in this case, do, do, we don't have the APN table, correct?
Well, according to section, well-
So you're right, we no longer have the APN table for the-
CC.
-CC zone, and there is no APN table any longer for the CH, because the CH is disappearing and being merged into the CC. Um, this is talking generally about all of the other zones. So you'll notice it's titled 17, chapter 17, 012, which is zone districts established, and then discrepancies. So this applies to all the other zoning districts as well, not just the CH and CC. And so I think what we need to do here is say, um, in case of any discrepancy between the designation of land on the map and the list, then the list controls for every other zoning district, except for the CC.
Actually, no, we want to-
No.
And I guess the thing that's, um, I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around is referring to the other zones in this zone.
We're not in this zone right now, we're still in an, an earlier portion of the, of the zoning ordinance. So we're not in the CC discussion yet. This is the prefatory language in the zoning ordinance itself.
Got it, thank you. Okay, yeah, so if you could say, in any, in any sections of the ordinance where there's still is an APN list, the zoning map shall prevail.
The zoning map is supposed to prevail generally.
Universally, yeah.
Universally, I mean, I'm minor, I know that got, that did-
Right.
That was an intent in the first time around. I know that went away when it was repealed, but my understanding was it was supposed to come back when we were doing it again.
The intent didn't go away.
The intent didn't go away, the actual language went away, and my understanding is we're bringing it back this time.
Right, and so, it's, it's not bad having it redundant in this referring to the other section, or, where it is, actually it's not redundant, you're saying it's not there yet in the CC. So yes, in all sections of the ordinance, we want to make the map prevail.
Yes.
Now.
All right, let me take that one back and have a look at it. I'm glad you brought it up.
I just can't off the top of my head understand the references in the last part of that first paragraph under A. Those numbers, I can't just off the top of my head, you know, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, in general, we just need to make sure that-
The map prevails.
The map prevails in all, any, in all instances.
Right.
Whether or not there exists a table.
However that needs, however that gets done. And then, and B is just the same thing as far as the list.
No.
No, no, again, the B, B needs to be amended, because again, the map will prevail.
No, no, what it's saying is if, if either in, well, it doesn't say map here, but my understanding is if you have a parcel that bridges two zones, whether it's bridging two zones according to a table or bridging two zones according to a map, it's the planning commission's discretion to choose which zone it shall be part of.
Well, we have some properties, though, in town that have the zone running through them, and we treat half of the property, I mean, we treat the property accordingly to where it lies in the zones.
Well, this would ch- change that, it sounds like.
This would change that. Again, I think this should refer to the map.
Yeah.
So, at this point, and I understand the discussion, and I think it's a valuable point, but in order to hew as closely as we can to the solitary purpose of rezoning CH to CC and cleaning up the CC, I'm kind of hesitant to recommend we start changing other provisions dealing with how we resolve discrepancies for parcels that may not be CH or CC at all, um, because I don't want to start having potential impacts on other areas of town that aren't included in, in the noticing for all of this. Do you know what I mean? That, that particular change could have wider ramifications than the narrow scope that we're discussing now.
So then, you're okay with deferring to the map in A, but not in B?
I'm coming back to you on deferring to the map.
And I, I just would say that I, for myself, I wasn't on the planning commission during those discussions, and so I'm a little, maybe someone could fill me, and maybe Jim, you could fill me in at some point offline on the, on the rationale of-
Well, let me, the, the, having, at this point, the APN tables prevail over the map, and that's a monumental problem, because-
Because the APN tables have inaccuracies and are hard to keep inaccuracies out of them, is that right?
That's correct, and the APN-
But, but we're eliminating the APN tables, at least the least two zones they already have been eliminated.
Correct, and the APNs can be changed unilaterally at the county level with us not knowing it. And then some APNs are listed in two sections, so it's a whack-a-mole. So by having the map, the map dictate, we get away from that catch-22. And in this case, with the CC amendments, and this is, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm going some different direction, we're just eliminating the APN table, so it's not a, not a problem. But to the extent that we're referring globally to the zoning ordinance, we still want to have the map prevail over these tables. The tables are antiquated and-
And is the map up to date at this point to where that could be done?
Yes.
And, and the way the map is done, I, I understand that the map is done through much more high-tech means than I've ever been a part of, but through Marin maps or something, so-
Yes, yes.
There's not going to be an issue with the thickness of a line actually-
No, no.
-leading over onto something. Okay, so this is all-
But to the extent that that line might fudge a property getting split by zones, then the- then this language, and there might be some remnant of this language in B that could apply.
For that, for that instance, a map is clearly superior in terms of describing where the split is, you know?
Right.
So I, I think this is all a valuable discussion, but in so much as it could impact other areas, I'm going to suggest we, we keep the discussion for another night just because we want to make sure people who would be interested in participating in this discussion with us have a chance to know that we're doing it. So I've, I've noted the comment and, and we'll be working with staff and we'll come back to you on it if that's okay.
But, and just to be, to be clear, to reiterate, there's been no controversy going through this in terms of eliminating the tables. And whether or not, and even for those tables that remain in other parts of the zoning ordinance, whatever we do along the way should reinforce the fact that the zoning map takes precedence. And we will be amending the zoning map, by the way, when we adopt the ordinance to eliminate the CH so that map will get amended. And I sent you the copies of before and after.
Right. But I, but I definitely understand the point that, that you made, that, that we don't want to change that, I'll change anything that refers to other zones because we would have to notice a much wider area and it, and we don't have time, you don't have time to see whether there are any ramifications. So I think those are very good points.
Thank you. I just want to keep us on track with what we told the public we'd be talking about tonight, so.
So again, the language, if there's any confusion in, in A, we want to make sure that the map, again, it's, it's kind of a cart before the horse because the table's not going to be there anymore in CH.
So you might not have to even address it because if there's no more tables, there's nothing to be discrepancyed about in CH to CC because there's no...
You just made a new word.
The tables are gone. And if you read section four, there are no more tables and there, the section seventeen, oh, one, two, point, oh, four, oh, is not, I mean, there's, there's no more tables to have a discrepancy with. So you might just eliminate editing. I mean, if you edit section four and it refers to tables that refer to other zones, you might then have to notice or deal with that.
So I don't want to prolong this part of the discussion because I really don't want us to go too far down this road. I'll just say that the only change that was noted here was to note the change in section numbers. And that change in section numbers arose as a result of the exercise we are doing here tonight. So that was the full scope of the intended change right here for now. But I, I've noted all the other comments.
And we'll have an internal conversation in more detail.
Okay, anything else?
If, if we breeze through section three there, I'll, I'll just throw in my, in the weeds comment that on the very end of section three, Michelle, there's, there's a letter missing from before PD, public domain. I guess that would be M.
You're right, thank you.
In the parentheses. Just at the, in that, yeah, right, right there. In the parentheses there, it should just say M.
And on the end of section six, where it says table X of the Fairfax Town Code, is that, is that really a table X or an appendix X? Just wanting to clarify.
Oh, where the map is listed?
Yeah.
Jim, how do you denominate the zoning map? Is it listed as an appendix? Is it listed as an exhibit? How is it actually listed in the town code? I didn't have the hard copy handy. We'll, we'll figure out the correct number.
I just, it seemed odd to say that a map is in a table, so it came to my attention, whether it's an exhibit or appendix.
We'll verify.
And on section seven B, that, there's listing, you list the, you obviously did this just to clean up the highway commercial, but I noticed, noted that one of the names, the multiple residential name, doesn't match the name in section three, which is multiple dash family residential zone, multiple fashion, multiple dash family residential. And so I was like, hmm, is that the same as multiple residential?
I'm sorry, where are you?
Section seven B.
So, so, so we sort of jumped ahead. We went from three, past four and five. So, is that cool?
Well, we talked about four.
Okay.
And then I just jumped back to say one quick thing about three, and then we went on to, I think five and six, we must have, must have quickly decided that they were basically just...
I think we jumped to seven, so I'm just making sure.
Yeah, I just jumped because five and six are just deletes.
Yeah, yeah.
Your comment about the multiple family residential zone is well taken, and it's something that occurs throughout the zoning ordinance. I think at some point, there must have been some renaming of some of the zones. So this is a good opportunity to clarify that, and I will do that. Thank you.
And I was just going to suggest again for clarity that maybe after the name, you put the letters, because then it'll be really clear. Is it an RS, an RS five dash five, a MR, blah, blah, blah? You know, you've got CL, RM, RD, RS. If you use those monikers, it'll be really clear what that name is. And then when it says duplexes, it only calls out duplexes in RD five point five dash seven, not triplexes, quadrplexes, or apartments. And I wasn't sure, did it really only mean to apply to duplexes or...
I think, I think only duplexes are allowed.
No, this is saying that these things are required to go through design review, I think. And I was like, wouldn't quadrplexes and triplexes in apartment buildings also?
That's a very fair question, but it's beyond the scope. Sorry. No, it's a good question.
Those might be uses that are part of that multiple residential category.
They are. That's why I was like, why is duplexes called out not, sorry, but I won't, you're right, we can't talk about it. So that's an editing question to be, you look at it.
I think Shelley typically, single family and duplexes are different from multi-unit residential.
Yes, although this looked like it was applying, saying that these ones were required, there was something, I'm going to leave it up to you to just look and see why it's called out. I, I, I see that, I just, it was called out to me, so.
And again, the exercise on this in seven B is just to redact highway commercial. Are we on eight?
So I doubt there are questions on eight, but I did want to make a comment about section nine. And that's where we've deleted the highway commercial zone. We've nonetheless left that chapter number as reserved, so it didn't upset the numbering elsewhere. So if there are questions as to why that's there, that's the answer.
I jumped to eleven. Does anyone else have anything on ten? Just a quick one on eleven. I would just say storefrontages, it says storefrontages tend to be continuous, which is a descriptor, not an instruction. And I always said, could it be storefrontages should be continuous? I mean, it's meant to be a, my understa, I think this is meant to be a instructional as to what you're supposed to do going into the future, not a, it's not a prospective, not respect, whatever.
How, how about the word shall be instead of should be? Shall is not must.
Well, I was, I was going to suggest maybe saying intend, storefrontages are intended to be continuous or envisioned as continuous. But because we, I think this would be, it would be too strong a language to say that...
I agree. I think intended, yeah. Storefrontages are intended to be...
From here on out, only in this one sentence.
That's great, yeah.
So is that a real edit? I think we're doing a real edit right now.
Oh, yes, we're real editing. We're on section eleven. And it's easier to just type intended than change it.
Were there any other descriptors that you wanted added to this to further refine the way in which, or reflect the way in which you were looking at appropriate uses? Or have we captured everything?
The only thing I might, excuse me, the only thing I might like to see is something about the architectural character, but is that appropriate here? If we're talking about nighttime population, we could talk about the architectural character of the central, the town center.
Waiting for direction from the commission, but that is the type of thing that we could take into account, yes, if that's the wish of the commission.
I don't remember off the top of my head, but we have some language in the general plan, in the town center plan about preservation of the historic and architectural character and the, the quality of the town center.
Yes, you're exactly right. I'm not remembering as we sit here whether the boundaries of the town center area are completely congruent with the boundaries of the new CCCH. I'm not sure about that, so let me work with staff. Thank you.
You might add some preamble language in here reflective of the L1 limitation and the size and scale kind of, if it's not in here sufficiently. Well, it says scaled such that an automobile is not, I don't know what that might be, but you might use that as a bit of a preamble to the L1 limitation.
And can I just get direction? So when we're talking about the scale of the desired commercial and retail uses within the town center, it's my understanding that the commission is looking for a scale that will allow for a variety of those types of uses such that this town center area is not completely dominated by one or two very large ones, but that we have the opportunity for a number of retailers and users to set up shop. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Well, but it could also be, you know, somewhat larger, but maintain the character and the architecture of...
So how about this? I've got an idea. On that sentence that starts with consequently, store, storefrontages are intended to be continuous, comma, enhance the historic character of town, comma, and scaled such, enhanced...
Be compatible with the architecture.
Well, the historic character covers so much.
That's true.
So I think it captures the architecture. It's a, it's a, so I would add consequently storefrontages are intended, it's a little bit awkward, intended to be continuous, comma, enhance the historic character...
Village character?
Village character of town, comma. So it talks about continuous, talks about historic character, and then how, you know, scaled, so it's not about auto-centric.
I like the idea, though, of using the word variety and diversity in, in our town because I think it's, that is what we, when I think of character, I think for me, needs a little bit more definition to it because I've heard it used as justification for very opposite reasons without a definition. And for me, and I think I've said this before, when I went and did a treasure hunt thing for my kids, what really came clear to me of what I enjoy about being in our central commercial area is the, the variety and diversity of both architecture and uses. And that small scale allows for you to have that, and that you've got tiles right next to, wood shingles next to this color and that color so that you have that variety. So if there was a sentence that we could put in here about, you know, size and scale and uses and architecture are intended to promote variety and diversity, both in architecture and use of...
So it's that middle sentence that's got the juice, I mean, of all this stuff. So how about consequently storefrontages are intended to be continuous, comma, with the rich variety of uses, comma, enhancing the historic character of the town, of the village, enhancing the historic village character of the town, comma, and scaled such that the automobile is not blah, blah, blah?
Or...
That's on, that's on audio recording, I'm hoping.
So again, I'll say it once more. Consequently, storefrontages are intended...
Why don't you take a look at the screen, Jim, while you're, and then...
Okay, got it. Consequently, storefrontages are intended to be continuous, comma, with a variety of uses, comma, enhancing the historic village character of town... And scaled such that, you got it?
Well, the only amendment I would add to that would be with the variety of uses and architectural design features.
Um, I've, you know what?
No?
I wouldn't do it here because we're actually going to visit development standards and design guidelines in the town center plan. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't...
That's true, maybe it is more appropriate in the town center plan.
By the way, we may have another exercise after the development town center plan to massage this. Katie, is this creating a heartburn at all?
No, it's not creating heartburn. I, I just want to make sure that we're leaving ourselves enough room to consider, you know, the, the little shop that might want to come in and do a facade that is not particularly historic in, in look, but complements the, the surrounds well. But I think what we're saying in enhancing the historic village character is looking back to our history of embracing a variety of building types and forms and...
We could say enhance and complement.
And if you'll, if you'll give us the latitude to play with this language a little, we won't keep you too bogged down tonight.
Yeah, great. Bingo.
Okay.
That was an important paragraph you wanted us to noodle to sort of set the tone.
So the next section is all the prefatory language that sets up the use table. And it just explains how you read the table. One important thing to note is under P, which says designates permitted use classifications, unless followed by an applicable limitation that dictates otherwise, any permitted use classification is allowed to operate along the street frontage. And I, I put that there so we weren't repeating it throughout. But if it makes more sense to you all to have that included as an L1 or an L2 or something, we could do it that way, too. I don't care either way, but that, that message was important to convey somewhere.
I thought this was clear.
And then this continues our general, oh, I'm sorry, Shelley.
On the U, rather than saying designates use classifications permitted on approval of a conditional use permit, what if it just said use, U designates use classifications requiring approval of a conditional use permit? The use of the word permitted there might be confused with the permitted above where they think, oh, well, if you get a conditional use permit, then you're now a P, not a U. And that's, so I would, if we pull out any confusion.
Thank you. That was my concern early on, and I couldn't quite nail it.
So if you just change the word permitted to classifications requiring approval of a conditional use permit? Because what they get is a conditional use permit, not being permitted.
Right, and that avoids submission creep from a conditionally permitted business expanding saying already permitted.
You have a conditional use permit, and you always have a conditional use permit. You're not converted into a P. You're always a U. And then the other thing that I had on here, which I think is the intention, but the words don't work, is that the director of planning and building services is not, I don't believe this, that last paragraph is intended to allow the director of planning and building services to create new use classifications. I believe it's just that that planning and directing services are allowed to determine if a U... if a use fits within an existing class. And the way it's written sounds kind of like use classifications not listed are prohibited unless the director, unless authorized by the director. And that makes it sound like he can authorize new use classifications, which I don't think was the intent.
You are exactly right.
So maybe something like use, uses not listed are prohibited unless the director of planning and building services determines that that use fits within an existing class or something like that.
Well, there's language elsewhere that talks about it has to be similar to a prior use.
Yeah, there's very good language in the very, in the beginning, I believe, before the definitions, where it says that the director of planning and building services may determine that a specific use shall be, shall not be deemed. So it says you can determine that it's not, or that the planning and director can determine that it is. And that's good, I think. It's listed in the use classification section seventeen zero zero eight zero three zero very clearly, and it's kind of semi-repeated here. So I don't know whether you need to repeat it, or maybe just don't say it again.
I would vote that for the ease of the casual user, we repeat it again, because I think you're right, it is more clear in the definition section than it is here. And not everyone's going to flip back to the definitions, but that's a very good catch, and I appreciate it.
We use the same language in this spot as the first reference. Is that, is that what you want?
So I'll pull out the existing sentence-
Right.
That says use of classifications not listed are prohibited, and replace it with substantially the same sentence that appears in the definitions prefatory language.
Is that, is that good, Shelley? Good. Is that good with the whole commission, I should ask? Forgive me.
Yes.
Yes, I agree.
As for the table, I don't know if you want to go through line by line, or if you just want to call out individual items that you'd like to discuss.
How about page by page?
I think by the most part, I, I mean, I think there was a few things, but I think for the most part, I think I agree, but I see Shelley's paper over here. I don't know. Maybe we'll start on this side, come back to do- What about you, Norma? Do you have anything on the first sheet of the table?
No, I already covered our, my concerns about the descriptor for L2. I'm good with the, well, okay, let me just look at office medical, L2 and L5.
Yeah, and that was at first confusing to me, but then that explains that it's permitted in the rear or on the upper floor, so that was one, I just wanted to make, confirm that. When I saw P, I made me a little concerned, but the, the L2 and 5.
And L5, but L5 says permitted also on the second floor, meaning it is permitted on the first. I keep coming back to that.
Well, but it's permitted on the first only if it's in the rear.
L2 is only in the rear.
By virtue of L2.
Or with issuance of a conditional use permit.
Right.
That's the one where we talked about referring back to-
I'm sorry, you got to get on the air.
Let's just move ahead for now.
I guess my other question, and I don't know how it ties into the memo, was the health and wellness centers, because I kind of see that kind of as a subcategory of office. Yeah, to me, it ties in with medical office, where it's something that's permitted, so I'm not quite sure why we thought that one needed a use permit. And the other one, and medical offices didn't, I mean, I would think maybe it's the same. It would be the L2, L5 maybe goes along with health and wellness centers.
I would agree, and I would add alternative medicine in the definition of medical, and move health and wellness centers into that.
So are you saying you only-
I guess as, as I was looking at that, I was assuming that the difference was, again, one of scale, where, for example, medical office, and I think it's kind of throughout this, there, there are a lot of sort of common uses of terms that are familiar to us, but that I always wonder whether they'll be familiar to us ten or twenty years from now, whether these will look, whether these will mean the same thing to people at that time. But I guess I was assuming that the distinction would be that medical offices would be like an office with maybe one practitioner and maybe a receptionist and-
Not a hospital.
And an exam room. Well, not a hospital, but as opposed to a health and wellness center, which may be like a yoga studio, that that might be what might be called, might be considered under the, is that, let me just ask, is that what people think that means?
That seems the definition of health and-
Yeah, and so a yoga studio might service a number of people at the same time. They might all come in for a yoga class, and it might be a much larger studio.
I think they're in recreation. That's it, they're in the gym. I think yoga studio is listed someplace else.
Oh, okay. So health and wellness centers, I guess I don't know what that means.
So this is one of the ones, if you look in the use classifications definition, you'll see it's blank, because we wanted some further direction. But with that being said, the handout you got tonight, the second bullet down, is asking for that direction, and it's including a notation that the Institute of Transportation Engineers, who come up with our parking standards and figures, have land use classifications off of which they work, and they have a definition for clinic that says any facility that provides limited diagnostic and outpatient care, but is unable to provide prolonged in-house medical and surgical care. So I didn't know if that perhaps captured what you were looking for, or if you did indeed want to stick with the definition. This all came about as a result of the Alternative Birthing Center that was previously allowed in the CC. And I didn't know if you wanted to go with that statutory definition, which is very narrow, and which would actually be somewhat difficult to distinguish its impacts from any other type of similar medical land use. So did you have direction in that regard?
It's, it seems to me that if offices medical has physician, dentist, chiropractor, acupuncturist, you know, alternative medicine, wellness clinics, I mean, I don't think that those, that office use is meant to be for group things like yoga. There's, yoga seems like it fits more in the health club list with gyms and aerobic studios. They're more like group studio things. But you do have acupuncturist in there, but I was thinking something else around alternative medicine services, because that was our-
Yeah, again, to, in my mind, whatever, I realize there's a lot of precedent to this, that you would, it's, it makes sense for you to be consistent with other people's definitions, but I think of it as the important thing being scale. And not so much whether, let's say there's an office with a, with an exam room and a front room, and it's a small thing, and one person works there, and one patient comes in at a time, and that patient gets acupuncture, or that patient gets some other kind of treatment, that makes no difference to me. From a land use point of view, it doesn't make any difference. It's having the same impact on the town in terms of parking, in terms of traffic, in terms of noise, in terms of the size of the building that's needed. Those sorts of things don't, they aren't really captured by looking at what kind of care is given in that building. So that would be, that would seem to me the kind of distinction that we would be looking for, if we're looking for any distinction, is distinctions of scale.
I mean, I think the definite, the difference, too, is like appointment-based services versus classes, drop-in classes kind of thing. I mean, all of these physicians, dentist, chiropractor, acupuncturist, therapists, counseling services, audiologists, you make an appointment, you typically go in one by one, the, you know, they have a similar use pattern. What you're talking about is they have a similar use pattern to them, whether you're getting craniosacral something or others, or cupping, or acupuncture, or whatever kind of medical wellness, health-based sort of, maybe medical, maybe it's just offices, medical wellness and health services, or something like that.
There's kind of a interesting hierarchy. You have offices medical at the bottom, you have health and wellness centers, and then on the list, we gave you personal improvement services, which would be, I think yoga could be in there, if you're going to have exercise aerobic, aerobic-
Jim makes a good point. I think something like yoga could perhaps fall into that personal improvement services if we want to introduce that new use classification. But I think we do need a way to capture the health and wellness center concept. And what I'm hearing from the commission is that you feel like that fits more naturally within the offices category? And if we can just carve out a, a good descriptor and definition for, for this that separates it from every other appointment-based health and wellness service, maybe that would be a good way to deal with it? Is that correct?
I heard us incorporating it into appoint, I, I mean, I heard the wellness center services, the health and wellness, correct me if I'm wrong, but I heard the health and wellness services being the same kind of activity. You make an appointment, you go in for your health and wellness, like you would go in for a chiropractor or an acupuncture. It's just not traditional medicine, right?
I'm, I'm just, I'm wondering whether we're, we're trying to, we've got a whole variety of different things that all of us have experienced and seen in various different towns, and we're, and we're trying to categorize and describe the things that we want to include in this zone. And, and we're trying to do that, it seems like, in part, by describing what kind of services they offer. Do they offer acupuncture? Do they offer yoga? Do they offer medicine?
Maybe it doesn't matter, it's the use pattern.
But that's, yeah, it's, but it's the use pattern, and we might actually even get it wrong as far as the use pattern in terms of sort of, for example, there's a, there's a, I think they might have closed now, I'm not sure, but there was Flourish Chiropractic over in San Anselmo. That was, they were very different from the Fairfax Chiropractic, which is also closed. But the one individual chiropractor that worked at Fairfax Chiropractic, that's, that was that. But then Flourish has a room full of people who come in and do chiropractic all at the same time, and they also have a yoga studio as part of it, and so that's in another room. And there's a receptionist, and there are several offices. It was a big place. And so in terms of scale, which I think is important when thinking about land use, they're both chiropractic businesses. They both offer the same service, but they're quite different in terms of scale and the amount of traffic that goes, that goes through them. And I'm just wondering whether we might be focusing a lot on the kind of services as opposed to just-
Right, I'm agreeing with you. It doesn't, the kind of services, whether you're getting cupping or chiropractor or acupuncture, is less important than the pattern of the use of the service, that there's a difference between an individual person making an appointment and going in and coming out versus a bunch of people all getting together for classes, that's a drop-in thing, it's not a, and it's, and we're looking more at those patterns of uses, rather than, you can have acupuncturists, people over here, and so, but that's why I'm saying, if I look at the list of uses under the definition of offices medical, if you look at that list, those all seem to fit from a use pattern. You make an appointment, you go in and see your person, and you, and you come out.
And I think that makes sense, because there are office medical. It says offices for a physician, dentist, chiropractor. So one physician, dentist, chiropractor, or whatever, it can only serve so many people. And so that sort of limits the scale. That sort of defines the scale of that word A, as opposed to, yeah, it's, so that seems okay. That offices medical seems to me that it sort of incorporates the scale.
And all I was saying was to add alternative treatments, because it's not listed in there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Though I come back to the 10,000 square feet, and we're kind of lumping a 10,000 square foot gym in with a 2,000 square foot gym, or yoga center, or, I mean, are we talking Planet Fitness, or are we talking Fairfax Gym?
Not within the medical offices definition.
No, but I mean, in terms of size.
The same could apply. It could be, I mean, a 10,000 square foot medical office is a mini outpatient center.
So you're advocating to reduce that size in our L1?
I was thinking that 10,000 is awfully, awfully large. I was even thinking 5,000, but maybe 5,000 is too small, maybe something in between, because-
Seven.
I mean, most, I would think that most, I don't know, Jim, if you have a sense, what is our average size of business, but like some, you know, 5,000 is pretty large. That's, that's like 50 by 100, I'm thinking, and maybe, maybe 7,500, but 10, I, there's not, you, you mentioned there's not many businesses that are 10,000 square feet, and I think it's the size, I think that everyone's alluding to, when you have a large business that may have multiple uses and a large group of people attending, that's when we want to maybe impose more regulations than a regular retail business.
So could I make a suggestion? It would be really helpful for us, and I think going forward with this approval of this, like we do with other kinds of applications, to have average, averages, you know, to, to be able to say, here's the, here's the average, the median, the mean, you've got two parcels in town that are over 10,000, you've, most are this, to justify, justify our decision on this? Because I think, I agree, but I really have no idea how, it would be helpful to have that data as part of the justification for the decision.
I have a suggestion. Why don't we have it? And then I'll come back with more empirical information about what are the largest buildings, if I can grab an average, which is have it to 5,000.
Oh, I didn't have it, I didn't have the data, I'm not asking.
Let's have it, it has.
Let's have it, and then I'll come back, and you can tweak it again.
Okay.
Okay, and another small point I want to add on the health and wellness center. I mean, I think it can be a broad range of things. We've mentioned exercise. I'm also thinking the original Good Earth on Bullyingness Road kind of just started out as kind of like a health supplements kind of place. You know, that, that maybe is more of a retail type of use, or an herb shop or something like that. So it's, it's kind of a broad category, and maybe it can be fit into a few different categories, depending on maybe what their focus is.
Right.
And that one is right around 5,000 square feet, the old Good Earth, the new wine bar.
But I would, but are you then saying, take it out as a separate category? Because health and wellness center is a description of a type of business, not a type of use. And I'm, I'm agreeing that you could, you could have retail under that title, you could have office use under that title, and I think it, for me, it would make sense to just get, to take health and wellness center and stick it under some other, like I was saying-
Medical offices?
A med, you know, offices, medical and health, you know, medical, health and wellness offices.
I like that.
I think it fits best under that category, but I could see how it might fit into something else, but it would be considered more like retail, or more like exercise, or something like that.
And maybe this is where, you know, this is maybe where a staff's discretion comes in, and I try to err on, being careful, bring it to you if there's any, you know, can I just- Yeah, and can-
It's not if it's an office, if it goes under office medical, it's permitted. If it's a health club, then it's a use permit. So health clubs, which would have aerobic studios, yoga stu, it doesn't say yoga, but I'm assuming that health clubs would be dance studios, aerobic studios, yoga studios, any kind of large group gathering where you're moving around a lot. moving around a lot.
Is that office business professional?
No, that's use permit health club. There's a office medical, office medical is not a gym or a studio, and that's permitted. Those are permitted. It's the gym, the health clubs that require a use permit.
Yes, I agree.
Which I think is, from a use perspective, makes sense to me, that it, that we would want to have a use permit for a group of people gagging around and jumping around.
In case we had a Planet Fitness that wanted to come in. Because then.
Then the requirements are very different. The parking, the, the, the construction, the restrooms, facilities, very different.
The other thing that's different, and Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, there's different in the planning department, there's zoning with respect to congregating. Like, this space here where you have a lot of people congregating is zone, is in, from a, from the, from a permitting perspective, is permitted from a planning depart, from a building permit perspective. Building permits for congregate space is different than building permits for office space. And so it would make sense for our use permit to also follow along with the building permit stuff.
Can we go back to the table for a second? Health and wellness center, you want to do what with that?
Put in an office medical.
So it's gonna be permitted, and, and you're gonna have the qualifiers under limitations also for that?
Sure. Yes, yes. And Shelley, I think that was a good point on the congregate, but the building code's called, called an assembly use. Anytime over 50 occupants trigger is, puts you in a category of, of assembly.
And that's the health club.
And that's the clubs, and the yoga studios.
The health club category that includes yoga studios.
Yes.
Gyms.
And before we leave.
Birthing centers.
Before we leave that conversation, I want to point out that one of the questions we've asked on the supplemental handout is in regard to assembly spaces, which is clubs and lodges. We could call it assembly spaces, whatever else. Do we want to add some provision for that type of use within the CC district? And if so, do you want it to be permitted, conditionally permitted? How would you like to treat it? Keeping in mind that if we do allow clubs and lodges, and that would include things like youth centers, or YMCA, or whatever else, if you do allow those, we will by law be required to treat religious assemblies in the same fashion. So it's really a hand-in-hand question.
Should be a conditional use permit, I think.
I would agree.
And, and would you have the same qualifiers, L2, I'm sorry, yeah, L2 and L5?
Yes. And I think it would be good to have that in there, because there could, you know.
Unless it's somebody moving into, you know, an existing church, or an, an existing facility. But if it's new.
Right. No, and the use permit runs with the land, so that.
Then in the health club, on this page, in health clubs, you call out aerobic studios and gyms, but not dance studios and yoga studios? Do we want to add that, now that we're moving the wellness, health and wellness into office?
That's also in the letter.
Those should all be together.
That's in the letter, the fourth bullet.
Personal improvement services as differentiated from health clubs?
Well, it says dance, music studios, aerobic studios.
Crafts.
So the personal improvement services use classification is typically used in zoning to talk about places where you could go to learn to paint, or, you know, take a particular class. That doesn't fall within any other use classification. It can have some overlap with things like gyms, for obvious reasons. But I at least wanted to throw the idea out there. I didn't know if there were existing, you know, dance studios in town, or music instructional places in town that we wanted to be sure to make space for. So that's the nature of this question.
I don't know. I kind of see those as kind of a separate, like, exercise, or something kind of category. And I mean, we've got the, we have health club, but maybe it's like a subcategory because it's a smaller, sometimes a yoga studio can be kind of fairly small. Maybe there's only more than, there's only like 20.
But the activity is similar to a health club.
Right, but the activity is similar.
I would put, I, I would put the exercise aerobic studios, yoga classes, dance studios in the health club category. But I think you're right, that we should add, we could add a personal improvement ser, I don't know if it's really services as much it is as space. I think it does make sense to have a personal improvement, or, yeah, personal improvement category where you have craft, arts, music studio, classroom spaces, like you have driving school here, where you could, where you could go and take a class, a painting class, an art class, a photography class, a whatever, kind of instructional, instructional, maybe you could call it personal improvement or instructional services or something.
So everything except exercise?
I would say everything except kind of exercisey stuff.
It's called services just to distinguish from retail offerings. So it's not personal improvement retail offerings. But I, I understand that services isn't necessarily. So we can do personal improvement instruction and, you know, whatever. But, okay, is the rest of the commission in agreement with this suggestion?
And is that use permit, or permitted, permitted, permit? And I would say it would also be the L2 and L5 thing. Although in Santa Barbara, they have one of those, like, grab a glass of wine and do your painting class thing.
They have that in Sacramento now.
They have them. I, personally, I wouldn't want to be painting in front of everybody walking by, but it is kind of fun to watch.
I have one, I just, I hesitated to bring it up. I was gonna mention it. You know, this is where it's a gray area, and the catch-all for the planning director to sort of distinguish this will help.
But I would say also use permit, because it, it could trigger building code requirements based on size and assembly. And so it's safer to make it a use permit.
I agree.
I think we got that.
Okay, can we go to page two?
Yes, page 13.
I would like to advocate that the medical laboratories in the offices be limited to a certain percentage of use. I would hate to see, like, a little teeny, I, I, medical laboratories to me just doesn't feel like a great fit with the downtown use. If it's ancillary, if it's, if it's ancillary, like, you know, you're running a blood, like, you know, you can now get those flu tests where they stick the thing up your nose, and they have to do that in a little laboratory in your doctor's office. Okay, that's fine, it's ancillary. But I would hate to have a little doctor's office with a big, huge laboratory, because right now it just says accessory to medical office use. And I don't know, maybe accessory has a clear definition to it, where you could.
I would, I think that's fairly clear. But, I mean, I thought it was clear as it was, that the accessory, but I mean, I understand what you're saying. That Quest Labs is not an accessory to medical office, it's a lab to itself.
So if accessory is a word that legally can be defended as such, then that's fine.
So accessory, I think, is a widely accepted term in planning circles to denote a use that is ancillary to a permitted primary use.
Ancillary.
But what we can do is have a look at the town code to ensure that we have a statement of that somewhere. And if we don't, we can talk about how we include that, because that concept would hold throughout all of these use classifications. You will always have primary and accessory uses.
Awesome. Perfect.
On the, on this page where it says service stations. Well, I thought we were on the second page of the table, page 13.
Fourth item down.
And so under vehicle equipment, sales and service, there's service stations. It has an S at the end of services, but, which could be eliminated. But I would actually think, instead of service stations, to make that say fueling and service stations, to try to capture what, what I think was intended there, even though we may find ourselves with it.
Where are we again?
Are we talking about a gasoline station?
Do we move off of page 12? Did we, did we finish?
I thought we were on the third now, sorry. Are we on page 13 yet?
Yes, we thought we were done with 12.
Where were you?
Have I gotten lost?
I wanted to get rid of swimming pools.
Okay, we're still on page 12.
Sorry.
Okay.
Health clubs, I don't know, but, health clubs included tennis courts and racquetball courts and swimming pools. And I, I personally don't think we should, I don't think racquetball and tennis courts downtown.
It requires a use permit, so it's not a done deal.
Requires a use permit.
Okay. All right.
It requires a use permit, but I think the thinking with that definition was that the, the use impacts on the town as between an indoor swimming pool, an indoor racquetball court, and an indoor tennis court, or aerobic studio, are not sufficiently different that we have a lot of justification for treating them differently from a land use perspective. And so I think that's why they're all up together this way. But if you're identifying in your head different impacts that we should discuss, then, then please let us know.
I just moved them to indoor recreation and entertainment. But that's, maybe you're right, it's a use permit, so.
Now we're on 13, I think. Okay.
And back to Bruce's comment, should the services stations be called a gasoline station?
I would actually like to get away from gasoline, which you know that about me.
They're not permitted, though. They have a little line. They're not.
They're not permitted, and it's a gas station that we do not want.
Okay, well, all right. Yeah, you're right. I missed that.
Except, are we okay with, if all of our gas stations close down, we will have no gas stations in town according to what we're doing here?
But those sites are grandfathered in as, if, if, is it Rhino? If Rhino closes, it's grandfathered as a station for a certain period of time, no?
Yeah, the use permit runs with the land.
So if Rhino has a use per, but this has a, this isn't use permit. This is a, this is a little line, so.
Right, but that's for new, that's for new, not existing.
Nothing new is allowed.
So nothing new would be allowed, that's true. But a use permit does run with the land. So as long as they continue to operate and fulfill the terms of their use permit, they would be allowed to continue operating, even though a new one would not be able to locate here in town.
But if they close.
So someone else could buy the land, and then someone else, another person could then start a business there. But if it's the same kind of business, they are permitted. They can continue to do it.
And this was the reason the town was able to disallow the new gas station at the old site on the corner?
Without getting into.
Because it had expired.
Without getting into the particulars as to any particular application. I just wanted to follow up on Shelley's comment, which was, are we comfortable with prohibiting these throughout the CC? And I, I don't know, I have not personally looked at where else they would be permitted in town still, whether the CL allows them, or any other zoning district allows them. So if that's something you would like us to look at before we make this final decision, we can do that.
Well, we have, we have four stations still in town that have use permits. So, well, it should be three, no, two, two, forgive me, forgive me, two. Hello, hello, two. That's right, we have two. And so those will run with the land indefinitely.
Except if they lapse.
They lapse if they are not in use for a, a year or two.
Defer to Katie.
What I think we should do is go back and have a look at the other zoning districts and see what they permit or don't permit, just to give you a sense of, if you make this decision here, what does that mean for the rest of the town? So if, if we can put a pin in this one and bring it back to you, then we'll have more information for you.
But we're only talking about the central commercial.
The only other, it's the CS and the CL.
I think the point was that, the question was, do you want to not have any gas stations in town if these other two went away? And then I think the, it was, well, are they allowed in other zones, so that you're not putting the cabash throughout town? But we'll talk about the prevailing use permit versus the lapse issue and.
Okay, well, while you're, while you're thinking about that, consider also that it might not be gas. It might be, let's say, a biodiesel filling station.
Right.
It might also be an electric car charging station. If electric cars become much more common, then there might be a dedicated station. So the newer electric cars are able to charge very rapidly. So someone might pull into a station and charge it in 20 minutes, and there might actually be a business that's set up with sto, bays where people pull in. There has been, I'm not sure if this business model is gonna prevail, but there was discussion for quite a while of a business model where electric cars, they would actually drop the battery out of the car and put another battery in. So you would not even have to wait for the charging. You'd pull in and swap batteries. That would obviously be a station. So there are, you know, the, we're, we're moving into a world in which I would just be cautious about using sort of the, our, our collective idea of what a filling station is and what it sells, which is gasoline and cigarettes usually. But that's, that's sort of what they always will be. They, they won't necessarily. And we should make sure that we are doing what we intend to do as far as, as far as all those things, as you think about it.
And I would also add, the traditional model from 50, 60 years ago included, you know, vehicle repair, which the Rhino also does. So I don't know if there needs to be distinction. How do we want to handle vehicle repair? I mean, I would think the, the Fairfax Garage, that's in the, but I guess that may probably has a use permit. It may be because of the side, I don't know, I'm guessing. But that might be something to look into.
Yeah, I think you're right. Vehicle repair should be considered, you should think about that separately.
Well, we have a bar's place right on the.
Yeah, I think we, I, I, I pulled that out, too. I mean, we've got a number, we've got a, a car washing place. We've got, I believe, car, it's a car washing, it's right at the very end of that long tail thing. I think, so we've got car, I think we just, like we did with the veterinarian hospital, where we don't want to, we, we need to be careful about existing businesses that we're converting to use permits, that were, that were previously permitted, that we're now possibly changing. And I think this automobile, you know, I think we should, I, I caught that as well. Because we've got two service station, not service, we have two repair places in town. One includes auto body work as well. And then we've got a car washing, we do have an automobile washing station. We don't believe we have any sales or rental places, which is fine. We don't have wrecking, we don't have storage. The gas stations do provide like smog checking, and tire fixing, and those kinds of services. And I think we want people to be able to get their tires fixed, and that kind of oil change, maybe, kind of stuff.
At the existing stations.
At the existing stations. And then if we don't want any new fossil fuel stations in our town, but we still want to be able to have automobile repair, perhaps electric automobile repair, or auto body repair.
How about this? How about if we just changed, instead of service stations, gasoline service stations are not permitted?
And I understand, I understand the theory here, but I think we need to be wary of falling into a, a trap of prohibiting something, prohibiting a particular product that is not popular within town, that doesn't necessarily have a different impact on the town than another product that might be more favorable. So to the extent that an electric vehicle charging stations impacts are similar to a gas station's impacts, we need to be thoughtful about that. Now, if there are ways to distinguish the two, we should talk about that.
I understand that, yeah. But there are differences in their impacts. Predominantly, the gas stations have a gas tank underneath the ground, and it has a pretty severe impact on, on the groundwater, and, you know, trees around there, and so forth. But, yeah, it's, I think there's just, I, I'm not, I'm not saying which things I think should go with which. I'm just sort of throwing out a bunch of ideas to, to point out that what, as we grew up and thought of as a service station, has now become a multiplicity of different options, some of which we haven't even seen yet. And, and we need to be careful about our language.
Which I think is true. We just need to be very careful about how we articulate what it is that we are wanting or not wanting. So you might say, stations which require below grade tanks of toxic materials, or something like, you know, so you are. grade tanks of toxic materials or something like, you know, so you are, what you're saying is you're not permitting large tanks of toxic materials in town, not stations.
Yeah, which would include biofuels, that would be.
Is that kind of where you're?
Yeah, exactly.
But it isn't just that, it's the traffic generated that's also a problem with those types of stations, whether it's electric or fossil fuels, if it's large enough to be an electric station, as opposed to individual stations in a parking lot, which is the standard at this time anyway.
Hey, Katie, I have a question, Katie, aren't bicycles under, aren't they considered vehicles under the certain?
So bicycles have to follow vehicle code provisions when they're using public streets and highways, if that's what you're thinking about?
Yeah, but they're not defined as vehicles, but what about electric bikes?
What about the bike shop that we have in town?
So, you know, I think, sorry.
No, I was just going to say, so the Institute of Transportation Engineers, which has provided some of these definitions, has just released a ninth edition of their trip generation handbook and manual, and the new edition was published to capture some of these newer uses that technology has given us since the last version came out, so maybe with your permission, what we can do is go have a look and see how and if any of these nuances are sort of broken down, and we can bring it back to you at our next discussion for a further discussion. I hear what you're saying, and if you'll let me take that direction and see how we could refine it, would that work?
I'm definitely in favor of staff taking a look at this, this is, we've opened up a sort of a general area that needs to be looked at in more detail, and I think that's a great approach to looking at it, yeah.
And alternative fuels might be a way to approach it, too.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, I heard what Katie was saying, that we, it's really not at our discretion to make distinctions where there's no distinction on a land use point of view, so, but, and I, and I would support that, and not only because it's what we legally have to do, but because it makes sense, you know?
Right, right.
So an underground tank full of biodiesel is, has about the same effect on the town as an underground tank full of fossil gasoline, it's, you know, so those should be treated similarly, but anyway, I think, I think you guys are going to spend some time on that.
And there might be.
Batteries don't, they don't, they don't produce any, they don't leak while they're being charged, there's nothing.
But if they're disposed of, it's a problem.
Yeah, but that doesn't happen at a service station or a charging station, that's a, that's a whole different thing.
So we'll take a shot at it.
Yeah, take a shot at it. Thanks. That was one line.
How many other lines are there on this case?
No, that was an important conversation.
Well, I don't know, another one I think that maybe might fit, that we have a general discussion, but I think we may need some, may need to come back to this is all the residential uses, and my first thought was, because I've worked on projects where, when you've, you know, if it's like a drug treatment, short-term facility, when it's like less than six occupants, it doesn't require special permits, and it would, it was considered, you know, just a regular residential, single-family use, so I think some, I think we need to look at how those are treated differently than some of these other ones that are listed here, and the other one that just came, that came to my mind is, what about, you know, like a children's daycare, if it's like, like a nursery school, I think we do have one, at one point was it like a little, you know, like a, like a Montessori school, I thought there was one in downtown, how, I don't see exactly where we have a category for that.
You're talking about the tutoring center, I think.
We have a tutoring center, but we also have a Montessori school, it's behind the inn.
Right, right.
I think it was, it's on Mono Lane, I think.
Yeah, it's on Mono Lane, behind the.
It's a preschool.
Preschool, and it's not a resident, I mean, it's a house, but I don't believe, maybe, I don't, I don't know if anybody lives there and it's there, and you're right, we don't have anything that could possibly perhaps fall in personal improvement and educational service, I don't know where you want to put those kinds of things.
No, because, I'm sorry, I don't think so, because the regulatory requirements are so different from a residential or anything else for that matter.
With the commission's approval, what I would suggest is that we just take a few minutes, I take a few minutes when I take this back, to develop our list of educational uses, you know, preschools, public schools, private schools, and include a line item there that would capture this type of school use, and then insert it here, but what I need to know from you is how you would like that to be treated, is it permitted, is it a use permit, is it in front, in back?
Use permit.
Use permit back.
And if, if I could add, the small, the small family daycare home is required to be on the second floor, but I believe there are some licensing restrictions that preclude some second floor use.
So I believe, and I can go back and check this, but I believe that small family daycare homes have to be permitted in the same way that your other residential uses are permitted within that same district, and so for this district, all of our residential uses are only allowed on the second floor. Yes, Shelley?
I remember conversation that we allowed them on the second floor and in the back, we have, we have had, we just didn't want them on the storefront, was my recollection that we were allowing in the back and up, but not.
For what again, for which use?
Residential.
It was, I think we approved live-work on the back of thirty, oh, sorry, I shouldn't speak in specific cases, pure residential, I don't think we have allowed on the ground floor, I'm not sure how it's treated.
I know we haven't, but I was thinking, I do remember conversations back, 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 where we had talked about allowing residential uses in the back, not storefront and up.
Right.
Isn't, isn't there, or wasn't there in the, the building that used to be Lydia's and then was going to be the weight studio, and then that wasn't, isn't there an apartment in the back of that that was just recently permitted?
And upstairs.
We allowed in the listing, it allowed uses in the back left side of live-work studio, and then I approved unilaterally the office upstairs to be converted to a residence, but I could do that unilaterally under the code.
So live-work would be defined as meaning the person who lives there works in the front of that same building?
No, not necessarily, no, 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 in the space in the back.
In the same space, live and work in same space, or it could be retail below and someone lives above.
Right, which is the case there.
Okay.
I do think there is language in the general plan about this, and I'm happy to go revisit that, because I think the idea with allowing live-work on the first floor was that there is still work going on, so it's still a retailer, commercial component, not just pure residential on the ground floor, but I'll go double check.
And now that we're talking about this, we need to talk also about, in certain circumstances, the accessible unit in, when one kicks in, needs to be on the ground floor, so we need to double check the regs for ADA.
Right.
But I think in general, speaking for everyone, I think that we would be okay if there was a special type of residential use in the back.
With a use.
It could be appropriate.
With a use permit.
With, with a use permit in certain.
With a use, yeah, that the, the second floor is permitted, and the use permit allows, you could apply for a use permit in the back, but you would never allow it by use permit or otherwise in the storefront.
Right. That sounds right to me.
Okay, anything else on page thirteen?
So aren't there some missing cells here on the, like adult daycare home, congregate living facility, at least on my copy, there's nothing in the P or Z.
There are missing cells there, and I am filling those in and preparing a memo for you about what state law requires, about how we address each of those, because you're correct that there are particular provisions relating to the size of each of these types of uses and how we have to treat them, so that's coming to you.
And then down where it says C-section XX, that's a placeholder, I assume, right, that's not a section XX that I was not aware of, okay. Thanks.
And my question on that applies to, see, the provision that we have about residential units are a maximum of 700 square feet with an average of 500 square feet, which I imagine would impact, I mean, there's a lot of these group residential and multi-unit, I mean, how many units could you fit in, I mean, so I think the square footage limits that we put on it might drastically impact the different types of residential uses that you could have, correct, is that what you're talking about?
Probably so, we just wanted to make it clear that they would apply to all of them.
It's hard to see congregate living in 700 square feet, maybe, I don't know, maybe not.
The tiny house concept carried forward to multifamily.
Tiny, tiny, multi-family.
Actually, there, there are a number, in, in new development of senior housing or affordable housing, it's not unusual to see five to 700 square feet units.
True, but a five to 700 unit that was multiple bedrooms to have, you know.
Not in one unit.
And that's what, a number of these are like congregate living and, and group residential, the idea of having a group residential in a 500 square foot space probably precludes it, but I don't know.
Right.
So are we on fourteen?
Yeah, I have nothing on fourteen.
I have no changes to that, or to VCD.
I do on D. On D, it says, this is just a, this is in the weeds, uses within the CC district.
Sorry, can we go back to fourteen?
Oh, okay, never mind, we're not done with fourteen.
On A, could we get rid of the, Jim, you're going to love me for this one, get rid of the word by right, and just say, any permitted use on the first floor is also permitted on the second floor, just get rid of that word by right, out of, anywhere you see the word by right, flag it and let's rewrite it.
The community goes crazy with that.
Katie, you good with that?
Yes, thank you.
Now I think we're on fifteen?
Are we on fifteen? Okay, D, yeah, it's just a word, just an S at the end of space, parking spaces for each residential unit, that's all it is, an S.
Thank you.
Oh, you guys are going to kill me.
Huh? We're on fourteen? It's okay, Michelle already got the S, so I don't even need to mention it again, we're done, back to fourteen.
The first sentence on L1 says conditional uses or less are permitted, shouldn't it say are permitted per the table, because they're not just all permitted, they're permitted as per where we say they're permitted, it's not just that all commercial uses of 5,000 square feet or less are permitted.
Yes, and I understand the nomenclature problem here, so permitted or conditionally per, well, no, it's not even that.
Are allowed as per indicated on the table.
Yes.
So just say are allowed as per indicated on table, blah, blah, blah.
So we're doing that right now, yeah?
I'll track changes, not permitted are allow, yeah.
Now are we on fifteen?
Maybe.
After, after Michelle catches up.
What's it going to cost?
Give the typist a break, I know what it's like. I've been there.
Okay, okay.
And somehow word just really wants to act up when you're on a big screen.
Yep.
And I don't know whether the word per fits in there, does, does per, did you intend that, Shelley? Just as indicated?
Are allowed as indicated.
Yeah, so that per.
Yeah, get rid of the per.
That word per can be.
There you go.
Okay.
I think you've given us plenty to do.
I guess so.
Oh, we're not done.
What happened to accessory structures and uses, are we, section thirteen says hereby deleted, and I just wasn't sure what, what, could you tell us a little bit about what?
So that section addressed which accessory uses were going to be allowed, and I don't know if I have it here with me, the idea of getting rid of it was that each of these use classifications will have uses that are accessory to them, and so if we explain that in the definitions section, then it's duplicative to, to keep having an accessory use section after the tables, and I'm looking at what the old accessory uses and structures said, and it's accessory uses and structures in the CC zone are as follows, parking garages, which I don't think we actually want, and is not an accessory use truly, it's a separate standalone use, storage for principal uses, that clearly falls within your, you know, signs, signs are dealt with separately anyway, and then mechanical amusement devices, and I have no idea why that's considered accessory to every other use we have, but it just clearly didn't work, so.
Is that like a horse saddle stunt that you can ride?
Bet that was like when you had a supermarket and you put in a quarter and your kids rode around on the little thingies in front of, I'll bet that's where it came from, how funny is that?
So given the fact that we have this language about accessory uses being allowed, you know, it just, it fell out, it didn't seem to be needed.
And so storage units that are dealt, like if somebody wants to put a storage container or a storage shed on their property, how is that handled?
Yeah, I don't think we should rule it out entirely, it's not an unreasonable thing to sometimes do.
So we, as things stand right now, we don't have any language regarding accessory uses that would require a separate structure, and if we want to specifically say something about that, we can, but Jim will tell me if I'm wrong here, frequently when we think of uses that are accessory to a primary use, you think of something that's going on within the same building, like you're a medical office, but you also happen to have.
I was thinking of structures, though.
An office manager.
I was thinking of structures because it says accessory uses and structures in the old title, and so I was just trying to think of accessory structures, if we get rid of it, which I'm fine with, and I'm fine if those.
If I hear correctly, it's just deleting reference to accessory structures in this old section, it doesn't mean that there aren't qualifiers for accessory uses and structures in the other section, and I don't, off the top of my head, remember the stipulation about containers, and Linda would know this in a heartbeat, but we need to verify what's going on with containers in the CC, I know it, they require a use permit, I believe, and, and we did allow one to prevail in a prior project, but anyway.
We have a couple of very large containers on one property.
And there's something coming your way on that subject, too, but anyway, so let us.
Could we just defer and you guys look up accessory structure, the uses I get, I think you're right with the uses, it's the structure part of storage or containers or that kind of thing.
Right, right, got it.
If it works for the commission, commission maybe, what Jim and Linda and I can discuss is adding an additional use regulation E, which says accessory structures, blah, blah, blah.
Right, right.
So, are we on page fifteen?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, section fifteen says SEQA, what's that mean?
So, that has been left blank at this point, because until we got our arms around the full nature of the uses, we couldn't determine all the possible impacts, so we do have a list going of applicable SEQA analyses that we think apply, given the ordinance where it is at this point, but now that it's a little further down the road, we'll have a better sense and we can refine that, so we've got. So, we've got like a four or five page analysis worked up at this point, but it couldn't be finalized until we had this discussion.
Okay, so it's a placeholder. And then section 16, right toward the end of that paragraph, I was just wondering whether it was applicable, the part about how if any decision of a court of competent jurisdiction invalidates the increase of the water service charges set forth in this ordinance, but I don't remember any water service charges being set forth in this ordinance, so I don't know.
There are no water service ordinances, you just have a very tired assistant town attorney who used the same language from our last ordinance, so that's entirely, I apologize.
I think you're doing a great job, and great, just wanted to let you know about that one. And then whenever we want to jump all the way back to page three and go through this whole thing again, I have some really in the weeds ones, but they're just a few.
I don't know, Jim, what, if we have some edits like that, is it best if we just give those to staff to incorporate into the document?
There are a few.
Oh, okay.
Let's, if it's okay, let's blow through them.
Okay.
And we still have a little, a couple of things to follow up on the list.
Yeah, I know, I think there's a few items we haven't dealt with in them yet.
Should we go back?
Go ahead, Bruce.
Okay, page three, in the middle of the page with takeout services. It says, "From disposable containers," and I would suggest that maybe we say, we replace those three words with "for off-site consumption," because I think that's the intention of it as I read it, is we're talking about takeout as opposed to eat in, but it doesn't have to be disposable containers. It could be just, just state the actual distinction for off-site consumption. When you're ready, Michelle? Page four, another whole page done, I will point out. Oh, yeah, okay, that's taken care of, okay. And then health and wellness centers, we took care of. Okay, home improvement sales and services, where it says fertilizer, soil, this isn't necessarily an amendment, it's just a question, but fertilizer, soil, soil amendments are stored and sold in packaged form only. I wasn't quite sure why. Is that just to distinguish it from lumber and building material yards, which is another definition, or why is it that home improvement? Again, as we see in the world today, things are all mixed up. I mean Fairfax, Fairfax Hardware has things that are sold in bags, and they also have piles of rocks that you could go buy in bulk, so, you know.
And we also have a nursery category, so it is kind of duplicative of a nursery category?
So, the idea with calling that out, that particular sentence out, is that
They're not allowed.
The uses are meant to be conducted entirely indoors, and you're not gonna have these big, generally, you wouldn't have these big piles indoors. Right, but if you want to strike it, we can, but I think that was generally the driving factor there.
That's fine, it's, you know, it's, the whole thing is gonna be at the discretion of the Director of Planning and Building Services to decide what is the best fit, and there're gonna be a lot of circumstances in which it's gonna cross boundaries, so that doesn't bother me. Okay, skipping to page six, where it's in the middle of the page, second unit, it just ends there, there's just a point out because there may not be a tag in your document to remind you that it says section, and then there's no section.
Thank you, and Michelle, if you want to fix that right now, it's actually chapter 17, chapter, yeah, point 048. Thank you.
Okay, cruising right along. I think that's it for anything else I have.
I had a detailed question on page six. The second, in residential care home, the second paragraph says, "This classification also includes facilities which are licensed," which made me think that the first paragraph are facilities that are not licensed. Is that because of the word "also" in there? But I was thinking that all residential care home services have to be licensed. Is it meant to say that some do and some don't, or?
So, it's a good question, and the distinction is that the first paragraph deals with entities licensed by the Department of Social Services, and the second paragraph is entities licensed by the Department of Health.
Thank you, you're right, that one does say authorized by the Department of Social Services, okay, thank you. Oh, and I think we might want to, unless this is a more specific term, I think mentally disabled as opposed to disordered?
You know, I'll double check the state statute, but this is all state law we're dealing with here, so I'll just verify that that's still the correct nomenclature, thank you.
Oh, and your second unit ends with provisions of section, oh, sorry.
If that's it, in that piece, maybe we can go to the memorandum?
Good idea.
And I, it's my notes on the first bullet, limitations on size of commercial uses, yes, and we reduced that to 5,000, and I'm gonna get you some more information on the character, existing character of the town. We covered health and wellness centers, food and beverage sales, yes, you'd like further delineation?
And again, I just want to reiterate, the only place that I saw the alcohol was in the, was in this section, and I do think that we should pull out alcohol sales separately. I don't know if we can, you're gonna look into it, but.
Right, so we would be looking at the secondary impacts associated with alcohol sales, and so that's where it starts to get a little trickier, so increased crime, increased calls for police services, those types of things would be the basis for doing that, so I'll bring back to you what I think we can do.
And it is my understanding that the licensing has a certain, there's already a certain allocation that each town is set at, and I think ours, because of the density and the composition of our demographics, is like we're allowed 10% of our, 10% of our commercial stuff can have alcohol sales, and we're already above that, or, and I don't know if that's in the licensing stuff or the land use stuff?
So, ABC looks at whether or not you have undue areas of concentration of these licenses, and then there's certain provisions for how local government can interact with, you know, approving a request for a finding of public convenience and necessity, so that is a highly regulated part of the state's ABC approval process. But what we can do is break down the food and beverage sales into more discrete categories and deal with each of them to the greatest extent we're allowed to.
Is that okay with the commission?
I think that sounds a good idea.
Okay, so, third to last bullet, cultural institutions, there are currently no provisions for any cultural institutions such as museums, art galleries, et cetera. Does the commission wish to add this? And I might add, we recently have a, a couple of art galleries in town, and we have a bike museum. So, let's see, we treat those as permitted now.
It might be 5,000 square feet.
And we, and we, I'll double check that. So we allow them under different categories now, is, this is begging the question, do we want to call them out?
What categories are they currently allowed in?
Well, I think Jim saying we allow them right now, before this zoning change goes into effect, but the new zoning ordinance doesn't have a home for them now, so if we want to allow them, we need to affirmatively add them.
We need to affirmatively add them because we have several in town now that we love.
And those who would require a use permit?
Yes.
And I think we generally like to support those types of uses.
So, with a use permit, I see nods. Good.
Are there, that begs the question, are there other things that were called out that didn't make it in here?
Well, we're getting there, we're getting there. So, that's your last bullet. The clubs and lodges, this use is currently not included, should you add it?
Yes, I think so. I mean, we do have a few clubs, but I don't see why it wouldn't work in downtown for some kind of small club or something like that.
So you guys all agree with that?
With the back?
In the rear or upstairs, not to take of retail frontage.
Okay, all right, and then this is the catch-all for you, Shelley and everyone, other uses, are there other uses for which we have not accounted?
And when you're considering that, keep in mind, we went through that whole table of the individually enumerated uses and tried to assign each of those to a new place or just recognize that it didn't have a place in the CC district as we now envision it. What that doesn't necessarily account for is where decisions have been made over the years that a proposed use was similar enough to one of those uses that we were going to exercise our discretion and allow it to come in. So, I don't, I can't represent to you that that table actually captured everything that we have in existence downtown, and I just don't know that for sure. So I wanted to give us the chance to talk about whether there were other uses that you're aware of or that you would envision being added to the downtown fabric that we haven't talked about.
I think it would be a good exercise, and Linda could probably do this out of her head as she visually walked herself down the street. I mean, we're a small enough town that we should be able to go, just as we caught with automobile situation of saying, well, wait a minute, if we do this, we're taking existing businesses that were permitted, we think, and changing them to use permit, just to kind of go through one by one and make sure that there isn't something that we're missing that currently exists in town that in doing this, we are now undesignating.
So, we'll come back to you. Okay.
I hate to have one of them show up at the 11th hour that we didn't consider.
In other words, we're throwing the question back to staff.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, guys.
It's okay. And then finally, do you want to call out adult businesses, retail sales and entertainment as separate categories?
Only as not allowed.
So, adult businesses and entertainment venues are treated somewhat differently than other types of general retail or general entertainment because of the First Amendment element to them. So, we can regulate these types of uses on the basis of their secondary impacts on the community, but we are not at liberty to flatly say, "No such business shall exist anywhere in the town of Fairfax." You know, we can be thoughtful about, do we want such things at least, you know, 500 feet from a school or from a playground or from a church? We can have those types of discussions, but we need to leave room for that sort of artistic expression.
Well, then you're saying it has to be by use permit?
Use permit, or we come up with some development standards or performance standards that would apply to all of them, and in which case, I'm guessing you would still want a use permit, given the nature of some of these secondary impacts, you'd want to weigh how to mitigate those.
Should we, should we wait until we get an application and work it through at that point, or?
What I, just to see if I'm understanding you, Katie, that you're, am I understanding you to say that we don't have the legal right to exclude them completely, and that if we do say that they're going to be under a use permit, that we can't just say, "Yeah, well, we'll do it under use permit and we'll decide then," because when it comes time to decide that, we'll have to have some kind of basis for our decision, and we, it can't just be our preference of whoever happens to be on the planning commission at that time and what they think about that, it's gotta be something, something deeper than that.
But it also depends on the proposed use. There could be a wide variety.
It does, it's gonna depend on a lot of things, but if it depends on the proposed use because we're concerned about its impact on kids in school, then we might want to write something down that says they shouldn't be near a school or something like that. But that's, that we, if we're going to, if we're gonna set ourselves up to maybe someday have to address one of these applications under a use permit hearing, we're gonna need some kind of guidance that we've set ourselves, otherwise we're acting arbitrarily and capriciously by deciding, right? Is that, is that my understanding?
That's exactly right. We would want to lay the groundwork that would apply to all applicants who came in in the future, and in establishing that groundwork, we're going to have to be mindful of the limitations of our authority here, and we just have narrower scope. We have to think about reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions that don't totally preclude such uses, but, yeah.
I'm gonna guess that there's probably other communities who've already come up with these things before us, and might we just ask you to bring us something that perhaps San Rafael has already articulated or some other area? I imagine this has been well, or a small town, this has always, already been thought out?
I will happily do that, thank you. I just didn't want it to be, you know, unless we draw some distinctions, like right now we allow movie theaters, well, that's all kinds of movie theaters unless we, you know, are thoughtful about that.
Is this the same with any, I mean, we're disallowing lumber and building, and I heard our conversation around service stations, and there's a couple of other things where, and then there's this silent on things, which is, means that you are not allowed by use permit. Is it, is this specific to adult things because it's the First Amendment, or is this, you aren't allowed to disallow, like I had mentioned firearms, and you said, "Well, we might not be able to say you can't have a firearm because it's a retail and it's an equipment and..."
Fire, so there are some categories of uses that have particular protections or regulatory schemes that apply to them. Those things include alcohol, tobacco, firearms, adult businesses, what else? Church uses, tattoo parlors, you know, there's a, there's a finite list of land uses that have a body of case law or statutory or constitutional law behind them that impact our decision-making. Other than that, we are completely free to regulate candy sales. We are completely free to regulate T-shirt sales. So, it's just, it's this small group of uses that we have to be particular about, and that's why I want to call this one to your attention.
Protected classes of stuff that seem oddly, but.
Well, some of those, would it, would it be fair to say, Katie, that some of those bodies of case law impose restrictions on us in a positive direction and others in a negative direction in terms of what we're allowed to do? For example, we, we might not be allowed to have liquor stores in every building in the town because there's, there's already a regulation set up, as Shelley mentioned, that you can only have so many liquor stores in the town. But does that mean that we can't say that we, now, I'm not saying we should, but does that limit us from saying that we want fewer liquor stores than what the, than what the more general law says? Or in the case of gun stores, that I assume there are general laws that say, there certainly are attempts being made to create general laws that say that guns can't be sold except under certain circumstances and with a permit, and, you know, probably there's gotta be a lot of security about how they're stored and stuff, but does that prohibit us from saying, "Actually, we don't actually want a gun shop no matter what"?
I will only say that some of those are very highly contested areas of law. So, I can't necessarily give you a definitive answer on all of these. Tattoo parlors, for example, I believe it was Hermosa Beach tried to outlaw all tattoo parlors, and you can't, it's First Amendment expression, it's non-verbal speech, it's communication and using your body as a canvas, so the town was not permitted to outlaw all tattoo parlors. So, does that limit or expand the town's authority? Part of the answer to that might come down on where you fall in your own ideological beliefs, yeah.
What the town is trying to do, right? Yeah, yeah, okay, so they go both ways. Yeah, those tattoo parlors would be restricted in terms of how they can operate, but they also, we're also restricted in saying they can't operate at all, so, yeah, okay.
So, folks, I think that gets us through the ancillary list of our memo, and I don't think we're ready for prime time on a, on a ordinance to be considered in a public hearing yet, given the. given the follow-up work we have to do. So I'd like to amend what I was suggesting at the beginning of the meeting, that we come back to you with the draft, you know, polished draft ordinance with a public hearing. I don't think we're there yet. I think we need to do this again, hopefully with your three other commissioners present. And I think we need to do it at a special meeting. I'm now fully up to speed with doodle poll. So I'll send out a doodle poll to you guys, assuming that our docket stays as busy as it is projected for May. And I'll start with Thursday after the regular meeting and throw in a couple of other days to see if we can get everybody on the same page on when to come, and then do this again if that's okay. I just don't think we're ready.
I'm going to be gone a chunk of the middle of May.
Okay, so the latter part would be better.
11th through 24th, I believe it is.
Yeah, it seems there's, seems to be some symmetry with doing it the week after our regular meeting. You know, we're sort of up to speed from the regular work, and then this is almost single focus, and we're still sort of up to speed. So I'll start with that, and then I'll send out a couple of dates maybe in that last week, if that's okay. Does that make sense?
I think that makes sense, and just, I guess, does anyone have any comments, or have we covered them all? That's the other item, are we adjourned?
I just wanted to really thank all of you on staff for this work. This is a huge amount of work. I really appreciate that.
And looking really good.
Even though it prints on this few pages, there's an awful lot that went into it, and more that will go into it.
And also let me throw that compliment right back at you. It's just really impressive, the level of conversation you all are having. And I snuck a comment into Michelle while she's sitting here so patiently. It's really important, your service tonight, Michelle, but also as part of your education, you know, you'll be here hopefully for many years, and you will be at the front counter reading the code, and tonight will help you understand the gist of what's, you know, behind the written word here. So it's not for not sitting here so much of the times. Thank you for doing that. And Katie, it's just such a pleasure working with you, and it is, I mean, it is humbling, your ability to talk through these things and your knowledge. Thank you so much.
You guys are a ton of fun. I wouldn't miss it for the world. Fluffy Earl the monkeys.
I just, I just wanted to add to that, compared to, I mean, just to see the level of professionalism. I'm looking at all three of you, the level of professionalism, the ability to go through this, having the background, having the information that we need to make these decisions from years ago is just phenomenal. Because having sat up here in years past where we're trying to make decisions and going, oh, do you know, or do you know? You know, or we'll have to come back and we'll have to go, I mean, to be able to get answers from such knowledgeable folks, it's fantastic.
And by the way, Linda wanted to be here tonight, but her son had a special music thing. He plays a sax in a jazz band. And I told her, well, she wasn't going to get here till late, and I said, no, please, let us do it. So she wanted to be here though, and she'll probably be here for the next one. It's a great, great meeting. Thank you so much. Progress.
Do we have to make a motion to?
I so will.
Whatever you like, whatever you like.